Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:01. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you for your faithfulness and we thank you for your protection. We know that you are sovereign God and you are a prince of peace and we thank you for your unity and we thank you for all truth. Father, we invite you into this meeting and we ask that you will bless us with your wisdom and that you will lead us and guide us in all truth. Father, we just ask that you bless everyone participating in this meeting on tonight. Bless their families, bless the citizens of Glen Arden, our employees and all who's associated with us. Father God, I just ask that you will continue to bless this United States of America and just bless the world in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. And amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, should you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillum? Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilman Harry?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Good evening, here.
Councilman Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Council President, I needed to add something to topics of discussion.
Okay, what is that?
Meetings. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, there's three resolutions that I needed to be added to the agenda and it's a resolution for Church Street, a resolution for Hayes Street and a resolution for the sidewalks on Glen Arden Parkway.
Do you have them?
The clerk should have them. I think she may have sent them out. She was supposed to have sent them out. I'm not sure if she did or she did.
Well, Madam Clerk, do you have them?
Yes, just a moment. I thought I sent them to you earlier, but I'll resend them.
Yes, and it's all that since council members don't have it now, I can pull it up when we go over them.
Okay.
And so there are three resolutions. So, Councilman Harry, since I won't forget, we'll just do those first.
Okay, whatever. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any opposition to adopting?
No, I'm sorry, Council President, I'm sorry. I had my hand up.
I'm sorry.
I didn't just butt in this time, but I just wanted to, I just received legal sufficiency on my ordinance and I was, can we move forward with that? I just got the legal sufficiency from Mr. Pinsky at 6 o'clock. And I haven't had a chance to review it, but he said it was only minor changes. I'm sure we can just both move forward with it. The ordinance.
Which one is that?
The emergency ordinance in amending the code of ordinances, the city of Glen Arden at the 149. Concerning the, concerning the stop sign.
Yeah, 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 we have that. That's on the agenda.
Okay, all right. I'm just letting you know that I have legal sufficiency for that ordinance.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any opposition to adopting the amended agenda as discussed? Hearing none by unanimous consent? The agenda of the amended agenda is hereby adopted. First up, we will go with Councilman Harry, I'm sorry, what are those numbers again?
The clerk has to give you the resolution numbers.
Madam Clerk, what are the resolution numbers?
We didn't add the numbers yet, but the last resolution, it will be 15.
Okay, I got it. I see it. One second, Councilman Harry, as I pull it up. Oh, yes.
We have a presentation?
Did I skip something?
Oblivio.
Sorry, disappears. Oh, I didn't miss that. I missed two things, sorry. Well, typically the minutes, members, you have the minutes for the month of March for your review and if you have any questions, you can ask them now or you can, you know, present them during the regular session, but if not, then we'll move forward. The, oh, Avio?
Avio, yes.
Avio.
Robert, Rob Car, Carl?
Hello.
Here.
And Darren Robinson also involved. The Captain Robinson is also here.
Thank you. Oh, Captain Robinson, did you want to do their introduction?
You're on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, how you doing? Captain Robinson, Glen Arden Police. I just want to introduce you to Rob Carle. He's with Avio, the stop sign. So, I turn it over to you, Carl.
Thank you, Captain. Good evening. Drew, were you on as well?
I am, yes.
Okay, well, hello, council members. My name is Rob Carle with Avio. I'm joined, as you can see, by my colleague Drew. Drew is the co-founder and president of Avio and as Councilwoman Jones mentioned, we're working closely with Captain Robinson, with Charles Simpson as well, kind of going over a lot of information around the stop sign enforcement program, working with them on pilots and all kinds of things. What we're hoping to do tonight is spend 15 minutes or so with you and go over a little bit about who we are as an organization, kind of what our purpose and goal is. Then talk a little bit about our Let's Drive Safer program and then I want to share with you the data, the pilot results from what we had gathered at, you know, a handful of stop sign locations throughout the city of Glen Arden.
Pardon interruption. And I'm sorry, this hasn't been communicated with you before, but you've been allotted 10 minutes for the presentation.
Okay, all right. Well, then I better get moving.
All right.
All right. Drew, do you have anything you want to say before I kind of jump into this?
No, go for it.
Okay, so let me, and I'm going to share my screen if that's all right with you.
One second, I have to unlock it.
Okay.
All right, we should get to go.
All right. I appreciate it. All right. Now let me know when you can see Let's Drive Safer.
Good to go. We see it.
Okay, perfect. Well, again, so I'll just kind of jump into it. We're going to go through those various topics that I mentioned, but first, we just, you know, as a general rule as an organization, and I'm sure you may have heard this, we don't believe there's any accidents. We believe that every crash is in fact preventable. It just makes people realizing to focus on driving and not do other things, whether that be on tech, texting, eating food, whatever it may be, all the various things that we do when you're behind the wheel of a car. A little bit about us, and again, I'm going to move very quickly, so if there's time in the future, I'd love to kind of dig into more detail, but a little background on us and certainly Drew has been in this space for a long time, but we're not new to traffic safety and specifically around AI technology and all of that. It's not something that's new. Drew, the other co-founder, as well as most of the engineers are from companies like Google and Meta, Nvidia, so lots of experience working in kind of these newer technologies. The product you're looking at on the screen was one that was built from the ground up by the founding members and some of the top engineers on our team. And it really is, it's a solution that was looking, driving down the road and being able to detect different things, whether a truck was driving too close, whatever it may be, but it was also watching the driver. And so it was looking at events that were happening in front of them and watching the driver's behavior at the same time. So really advanced technology and it ultimately resulted in a 30% reduction in car accidents or truck accidents, I should say, for folks that were, for the trucks that are using the system. And currently today, there's about 200,000 plus trucks that are using the solution. So that's kind of where the impetus began and then it started to figure out, how do we take this to the masses, right? How do we make the roads safer for everyone? And that's really the impetus behind Drew and his partner starting the company. And really what drives us today is how can we save lives? So I think most of you are aware of bill HB 364, passed last year for Prince George's County, and it really is around stop sign enforcement. And I know when I came on board, I didn't realize just how egregious it was in terms of folks not stopping for stop signs. So we work very, very closely with the county legislator, with various chiefs in the Prince George's County area to really push and help get this legislation across the finish line. And we've got, you know, several municipalities now in PG County that are utilizing the surface and seeing great results. And I'll talk a bit about, more about that in just a minute. It's really exciting what PG County has started. All of you are part of really that cutting edge of a new, a new technology to help save pedestrians, cyclists, make the roads safer. And it's kind of spurred other legislation. So Virginia's looking at legislation, New York. So it's really kind of cool that PG County is the beginning of this and it's, I think, going to be absolutely a nationwide impact ultimately. If anyone has any questions, please shout them out. So our goal as an organization is, really is for safe drivers, safer streets, and we want to do it through community. I think I think historically, you know, there may have been, I think very early on, I'll just say when camera technology came out, I think there might have been different focus on what it was really about. And we are really focused on fixing the problem, right? This isn't a gotcha type moment. This is how do we educate the community? How do we change this behavior? And and a big part of that is education. It's, you know, getting the community buy-in. It's really changing the mindset around, in this case, you know, stop sign, but it's so much more than that, right? It's all the things with speeding and distracted driving, all these various things make up unsafe roadways, but, you know, we want it to be us and the community making this better. It's very easy to just say, hey, let's enforce the things, but no one really learns, right? And one of the very cool things that we do is if somebody ultimately does get a citation for something like this, out on the website, there's information. It explains what they did wrong. They have an opportunity to actually see their violation and learn from it and be able to say, oh, I didn't even realize I did that. I know I've been on board now for about eight weeks and my entire driving pattern has changed just from having the conversation and being aware of my own driving behaviors when it came to stop sign. I've, I think I stopped at 100% of signs and now I tell people I'm more worried about getting run over from behind than I am actually stopping at the stop sign because just nobody expects people to actually stop. So, you know, we want to be a part of the community. We want to fix the problem with a lot of the municipalities we work with. We do that. We attend, you know, your events, your weekend events, all that kind of stuff. We want to be a part of the community and fix the issue with you. What you're looking at here is an example of, of one of the cameras. This one happens to be in Colmar Manor. And if you look at it, it's definitely different than a lot of things you've probably seen historically. It's a much smaller profile and you'll notice the raft that's on it. And that's by design and we worked with the community to wrap the post, right? We don't want this to be a gotcha. It's out there in front of you. Hey, here it is, you know, but we want it to be, again, this is part of the community buy-in, the initiative there. We also talked with some other municipalities that are looking at doing artwork in the crosswalks. So this is a great accompaniment of that, right? We're now just kind of becoming, it becomes a whole thing, right, around school zones that you can see the camera, you can see the crosswalk and really trying to make an impact. Some of the other cool things about the solution is there is no need for power. As you can see, it's all solar powered. So the time it takes to implement one, you can see how small the footprint is. There's not all the permitting, there's not all the having to run electrical to it. So very, very easy to put it up. Within a week, it can be up and running. So we're really trying to change the, the way that enforcement is done. Like I said, from the education, community buy-in to also just revolutionizing the footprint and what the actual poll looks like and just how it fits into the community. And we're seeing some fantastic results. We've got a couple of folks that have been running for about 60 days now. And in those two examples, one is Morningside. They've seen a 50% reduction in stop sign violations in just the first two months. Colmar Manor has seen a 38% reduction and we're seeing folks that are now actually, they kind of have their initial implementation, but they're seeing such a tremendous success. They're having really no pushback from the community. People are excited about it. So we have, you know, Chief Franklin, as you can see, you know, he's, he's absolutely thrilled with it and he's indicating to us that he couldn't do this with even 30 officers. So it really does act as a force multiplier. We know law enforcement is stretched even more thin nowadays and having technology help with, you know, traffic enforcement and keeping the roads safer is, is really what we're after. Now, I'm going to pause for a second. I want to show you some of the data that we collected from the pilot sites, but are there any questions or comments at this point?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, one question I do have is I'd like for you to explain to the council why we need an ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's, all of that stuff is really around the process that PG County has laid out and is part of the legislation. And so there's three big requirements that are, there has to be a local ordinance approved by the city. There has to be a approval letter as well that is ultimately part of the requirements. And there also has to be a public hearing posted and the meetings are all part of what are required per the bill to ultimately get county approval and subsequently put holes in the ground. So it's just, it's following the rules that the law outlined and to get PG County approval. That answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I know we're getting tight on time. Any other questions before I show you the data real quick? And I can certainly make this deck available to everyone. All right, well, I will, I will move on. So what we found is the, overall, there's 2,967 violations per day across seven intersections. So if you think about that every day, it's staggering, right? 30 days, we're talking about, you know, 180,000 violations, if my math's correct. I think that's right. No. What is it? 90,000? Anyway, it's a lot. It's a lot. And more alarming is that 85% of all the vehicles are violating. They're not stopping. And that's what I have found and anybody can go out to any stop sign nowadays and just stand there and just watch. It's alarming that no one stops anymore. And there are different degrees of it and there are certainly very egregious violations. I looked through a lot of video and I found some where people just absolutely didn't stop. I didn't find, luckily for your community, some of the most egregious ones that we see where people just, I mean, they go through a stop sign at 50 miles an hour. So we're seeing, you know, people go through, straight through intersections at 20, 30 miles an hour, but you don't have some of the people that are really flying through. So in the slide, there is a breakout then of each of the individual locations, the total number of violations per day. And again, I can't stress these numbers are per day, which is what makes them incredible. And then this one was 94%. So Smithy Place or Michael Place. This, these are violations, the numbers we saw there. Glen Arden Parkway and Fisk, 78% of the vehicles are violating a stop sign. So I'm hard up against it. I don't, I want to respect your, your time, Councilman Curtis.
You go ahead and finish.
Okay, all right. So we get down into Glen, Glen Arden Parkway and Eccles Avenue northbound. Again, there's 73% of all vehicles daily. So there is a lot of incidents and there's a lot of people violating. And as we all unfortunately learned last year with the tragedy in Riverdale, and I can tell, I just spoke with them the other day, they're still feeling the effects of what it is. And so it's, it's more important than ever with all of the folks and distractions and everything else that everybody's doing that we, we get back to actually stopping at stop signs. There's a couple here that I'll show you, just a couple of examples. And again, I didn't find anything that was real egregious, which again, that's great, but did find enough stuff where it's kind of, we tap the brakes, but, you know, just there's no stopping at all, right? There's a couple other ones that I can jump through and you all have access to be able to go through this and look at some of these at your leisure. Like I said, I can certainly make sure that the, the deck itself is provided to the council members as well as this link here to be able to come out and look at some of these videos on your own time. So I'll stop there. Drew, do you have anything you want to add?
Just, yeah, just quickly, you know, really appreciate everyone's time. I know Glen Arden was interested in doing the pilot. We had this pilot both last year and early this year. And, you know, so far we've deployed at Morningside, Colmar Manor, Capitol Heights, Berwyn Heights, Brentwood. District Heights is about to go live as well. And, you know, would definitely encourage folks to, to take a look at some of these videos. Rob, maybe you can just click through a few of them as I'm talking, but, you know, you can, you can definitely see people's kind of pensions for, for, for just, just running these. And, you know, we found that the behavior change is really the one that we want to sort of tackle. And so hopefully, you know, as we finish these pilots, as we kind of get through some of the county council process, we can have these up in Glen Arden sooner rather than later to help you all take care of the problem as well.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
So you're saying even once we go, even if you approve this, we still got to go through the county council process?
That is correct. And I certainly will work closely with you all to help minimize that as much as possible. The county approval letter, we will draft that for you. So that just requires your review and signing it. But then, yes, the public hearing piece, and they're very specific about that clearly being posted and that there are minutes. And we can also, it's not uncommon, I can come onsite if there are questions that the public has to be able to answer them directly, but yes, and I can also send you some example ordinances. I think I've sent those over, but, yeah, unfortunately, yes.
Okay, so what is, what is David's timeline for the county council that you've seen for them to go through the process?
Yeah, well, typically it's 30 days is kind of what we're seeing. Now, part of that could be potentially that budget season is going on right now. So a lot of the same folks that would draft the resolution on the county side are, you know, busy on the budget. So, but I think it's safe to say that you're looking at about 30 days. Once we have the packet is what they call it. Those three items I just talked about, once we have that and get that over to the county clerk, that kind of starts then the 30-day window for their approval.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you. This, this question is for Councilwoman Jones because I believe this is being brought forth as an emergency ordinance. And I don't discount the fact that we should move forward with this, but I'm just wondering about the emergency nature, particularly because throughout the presentation, we've heard that, it sounded like to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's not something that's egregious in here in Glen Arden. So I just want to just get some context around what what elevated this to an emergency status.
Councilwoman Jones, if you don't mind, I'd love to answer that.
Okay, you can answer right behind me, but I just wanted to say this quickly. Councilwoman Fareed, thank you for your question. I consider it an emergency due to public safety issues. When I saw this being advertised or being shown on the news about this company putting in these across PG County, I saw some, some children on a bicycle where they showed a picture, they were on the bicycle and somebody just came out at the stop sign. So I'm seeing this as a public safety issue in the city of Glen Arden, especially the portion that they're showing on Glen Arden Parkway is where the Glen Arden Wood School is. Some of those kids walked the Savanna Woods from, from, from that area. So I just wanted, it's just public safety, safety for our children, safety for our seniors, safety for our, our drivers, safety for one another. Thank you.
Certainly. Sorry, sir. Just, I just thank you for that, Councilwoman Jones. I recognize it's a public safety issue. I guess what I'm more so asking was, was there anything specifically from the pilots that were done that indicated that we have an emergency issue in Glen Arden? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Okay, dude, I'm sorry. Due to the one slide that he showed where somebody, people have been flying through Glen Arden Parkway on, and on the, in Ward Three and Ward One. Especially Ward Three. They are, people are coming to go to the shopping center. They are flying down Glen Arden Parkway. They're not stopping at the stop signs. We see over in the, we saw last year when Council, I'm sorry, when Captain Robinson brought this to our attention, that there was an issue over in, in the Woodmore area where the people are not stopping at the stop signs and the traffic has truly increased. In fact, I was out this afternoon going to the shopping center and I had to wait, never had before, but like maybe seven cars going towards the shopping center before I could come out of Second Street. So there are a lot of track, we have a lot of traffic flowing through the city of Glen Arden. There's some neighbors in Jeff Road, Ty Road, they're complaining about a lot of traffic coming through there. So we have a lot of traffic coming through and then there's a lot of people that are just not stopping for the stop signs.
Okay. Thank you. I'm satisfied with the responses.
And one thing, sorry, just, just to comment, you know, we've been running pilot programs all across different sorts of municipalities in Prince George's County. You know, Rob, if you, if you go back to Sir Michael in terms of the data view, you know, that's, that's 2,000, close to 2,000 violations a day. And when we, when we sort of stood there, and Rob, if you just play some of the videos, you know, I know Rob might have used the words not, not egregious, but what we're seeing is just blatant disregard for the law over and over and over. And when we've been there with our pilot programs, we've talked to pedestrians and, you know, they feel unsafe there. And so when he, when he meant not egregious, he was talking about the ones where we've seen 50 miles per hour through these. But these are pretty severe and the volume is higher than anything else in the community.
Well, I appreciate that and I just wanted that to be clearly articulated because when we're hearing it's not egregious, but then it's an emergency. I just want, I definitely believe that there's an issue with traffic safety here. So I'm not discounting that part. I just want to make sure that the narrative that we're telling matches up with what, you know, we're saying, so.
And Councilwoman Fareed, I would just say that, yeah, an example of egregious, the other day, we saw someone go through a stop sign, sliding around the corner, went up to the main street, slid around that corner and then went up the road. So it's egregious is kind of when I was thinking of that, I didn't see something that, you know, far gone, but certainly lots of, you know, not really slowing down 20, 30 miles an hour through a stop sign. I certainly see plenty of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure, sure. Thank you for the question.
Are there any other questions? All right. Well, Rob, thank you for the presentation. We will, I guess pair this with, let me pull it back up. With ordinance 011, 2025. And since we're ordinance zero eleven twenty twenty-five. And since we're on this topic, then we'll just move that up and take that one first. So Councilwoman Jones, do you want to present this ordinance? Or do you have anything to say?
Enough has been said. The presentation was, I think, the tremendous educational background for the council to consider. Like I said, I consider this an emergency ordinance. It will immensely help the police department out because as, as I've discussed with some of the officers, nobody has the time. I mean, we have a, a force twenty-one officers, but we, we don't have the time to stand at a stop sign and, and or an area to, to do that task. So to implement this program, I think it will, in the beginning, we may have a lot of violations, but I'm sure as people learn that those devices are there, that it will cut down on some of the issues that we're having at stop signs, especially in the, the vulnerable areas such as the school area and then on that Michael and Glen Arden Parkway area. So the, like Mr. Rob, Mr. Carl said, we have to present an ordinance to the county council to let them know that this is what we want to move forward in doing. And this is what this ordinance is for. And like I said, Mr. Kupinski just sent me the legal sufficiency on it at six o'clock. I haven't had a chance to review it, but what he did show me over the weekend was the, the small changes that he made, but I just want to make sure that they are what they are. So I will get that, that, the legal sufficiency ordinance out to the council first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members regarding ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five?
Yes, Mr. President. I guess my feeling of this is that while I support, you know, us doing what we have to do for stop sign violations, there's also stop sign violations all over the city. And is, this should not be, this is not a cure all. And I think this should work in conjunction with our police department actually doing traffic enforcement and traffic control and, and stop sign, stop sign enforcement and traffic control. Because this, this is not, this, not only those seven areas that they picked that this is a problem. And so we got a police department of twenty-something police officers. I think sometimes, nobody says you got to sit at a stop sign all day long, but I think doing routine traffic control, stop sign monitoring is essential in order for this program to really be effective. Cause you know, you ain't, you don't have to go down Glen Arden Parkway. You, if you don't go down Glen Arden Parkway, you can go down Piedmont and be at the same place. You know, you can go through other parts of the city without having to go down Glen Arden Parkway. If you think it's a speed trap, because people probably would do. You know, and I don't think we're going to sit there and fill the whole city with a bunch of poles and solar panels and take away the, take away from the aesthetics of the community. So I think it's a two-fold approach with stop, with speed monitoring cameras, but also our police department need to do more stop sign enforcement, because I see somebody that rides right through the stop sign here at the corner of my house at Johnson and Grant. Every day he rides right through the stop sign. You know, and it's just a matter of letting them know that you, you, the police pull you over, you could be, I mean, they need to know that you could be, you could be pulled over, you could be, or you could be pulled over by a police officer. You know, if you, if you run a stop sign, they shouldn't think that, that the only place it's going to be enforced is where the cameras are. So I think it needs to be a two-pronged approach when it comes down to enforcement, because a child can get hit just as easily on Grant and Johnson, just as, as easily as they can on Glen Arden Parkway or over on Sir Michael or any other, any other main road in here that has the cameras. So I'm just saying, we need to look at this from a standpoint that is not a cure all and it's not going to stop all stop sign running, because again, we have a nice sized city that the police need to still do their part and do stop sign monitoring and stop sign patrolling at various intersections. And I'm not saying sit out there all day long. You just got to pull over a couple before the word get around it, the police is out here doing a stop sign patrolling. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, I do agree with Councilman Herring on that point. But from what I understand and Mr. Carl or, or his colleague can correct me if I'm wrong. Once they, the, the trend starts, you know, falling down, we can move those devices from one place to another, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your name, sir?
Drew.
Drew.
Yeah, one, one comment, you know, to, totally, totally agree with the, with the need for officer enforcement to continue. One, one thing I wanted to highlight is in both Morningside and Colmar, one of the things that they noticed is even though they only put the cameras in specific locations, they actually did notice that people were following the behavior all across town a lot more. And, you know, Brentwood is a town where they started with eight and they, they've actually requested to put in, you know, ten more cameras all across the town, just because the impact is really working. For officers, but just I just wanted to highlight that where agree, agree that the, the both end is, is a good approach. Our hope is that the, the technology can help officers focus their time better and, and sort of on those places where you really need twenty-four, seven deterrence in the winter, in the, in the hot summer months, the cameras can, can sort of support and be a force multiplier.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments related to this ordinance? Uh, Chief? Okay.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Chief Bryant. Uh, yes, um, yeah, just to be clear, law enforcement. And like everybody said, it is a two-pronged, three-pronged approach. Traffic enforcement is essential at every level for stop sign, traffic violations and everything else. So we always continue to do that. So I just want to make that clear. Cause that leads to other things for our city to protect our citizens. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Then all the comments, then this ordinance should be, if there's no edits or anything, should be ready to go to public hearing for public comment. All right. Thank you.
Um, Mr. President, may I ask a question right quick before we leave our topic? And maybe one of the gentlemen can clear it. So what is the, so the county has strict criteria for a public hearing. What is their criteria for the public hearing that we must hold?
Yeah. So specifically, they just want to make sure that the notice was clearly posted, right? So that can certainly be online. It can be social media, right? Multiple different places, however you normally post something like that. So they want to see proof that it was done. And then on the minute side, they, uh, in some cases, what we've heard of some municipalities that they're simply, there may not be any public discussion, right? Folks just don't come to the public hearing, right? Whatever it may be. But we want to see that the topic is listed on the agenda for the public hearing and that there is a section for public comments, right? And if there weren't any, then okay, so stating that is fine. But they just want to make sure that the community is actually seeing this and, and having an opportunity to ask any questions they may have.
Okay. So there's no time, there's no, you got to advertise and you got a certain amount of time, you got to advertise before the public hearing?
No.
There's no stipulation for that? Okay. Just want to make sure that we don't run into any issue with, with that. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good. All right. I think we're good to go. All right. Next up, we'll go with Councilman Herring, your three that you pre added on to the agenda.
Point of vote, the council president.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to thank Mr. Carl and, and I, here we go again. The other gentleman, his other colleague for giving us the presentation and, and letting them know that we're moving on with the rest of our meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you again, Councilwoman Jones. You know, Charles Simpson, Captain Robinson and everyone for taking, spending twenty minutes with us. Thank you, President. And I hope you all have a wonderful evening. And if you have any questions, certainly in the future, look forward to answering them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. All right. Next, this resolution doesn't have a number, but it's a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for asphalt repairs on Hay Street. I'll pull it up. One second. It's here. All right. Councilman Herring?
Yes. I just wanted to bring this resolution because I know we've been talking about Church Street, we've been talking about Hay Street, we've been talking about the sidewalks of Glen Arden Parkway. So I wanted to make sure we bought a resolution that we go here and appropriate those funds, but we already appropriated the funds in the budget. I just wanted to make sure that we approved the work to move forward so that we can get this done. I think this has been sitting, sitting around for a long time. And I think we, and since we broke it out a line item for each item, I would like to have a separate resolution for each one, just to make sure it doesn't get lost in any other program, any of the street projects that we have.
Okay. All right. Councilmembers, are there any questions related to this resolution? Uh, Councilwoman Fareed? Councilwoman Fareed? Councilwoman Fareed, we cannot hear you if you're speaking. Okay. We'll come back to Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Jones?
Your council president, I just have one question. This is going to cover from Hay Street, from Glen Arden Parkway to Johnson Avenue on Hay Street?
No, it's going to cover the middle of Hay Street. They actually outlined, they actually marked the road on the sections that they're going to cover. So it's like from Johnson Avenue to a little ways past the entrance of the apartments.
Okay, what's
It's not the whole street.
That little street down there. Okay. So where I see the, the markings in the street is what, what they're going to do.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Council President, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. I don't know what was going on before. I was asking if you could please read it since we did not receive this in advance.
Councilman Herring, did you want to read the, the resolution?
Um, not particularly. Cause I don't even have it in front of me, but it says, a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for asphalt, asphalt repairs on Hay Street. Whereas the city council of the city of Glen Arden seeks to address critical infrastructure improvements to ensure the safety usability of city streets. And whereas the city manager in coordination with the Department of Public Works has identified Hay Street as a priority location for asphalt, asphalt surface repairs based on current road conditions. And whereas NZI Construction has submitted a proposal dated March twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars to complete the necessary asphalt repairs on Hay Street. And whereas the proposed work aligns with the city's FY twenty-five capital improvement plan and is eligible to be funded through account number seven six three two dash thirty dash eighty dash ten. Whereas council has resolution. That's not right. Uh, I think it was R. I'm not sure. Resolution four dash twenty twenty-four on September the fifth, that needs to be cleaned up. It was September the fifth, twenty twenty-three to award NZI Construction with a indefinite quantities contract. And, and resolution four dash twenty twenty-four noted that Prince George's County had conducted a competitive bidding process and awarded an indefinite quantities contract to NZI corporate, uh, construction corporation, Prince George's County contract ninety-three dash eight to perform all road improvements specified in the county contract in the city, city's bidding process. In section eight eighteen B of the city charter have been satisfied by the county extending their contract with NZI until December thirty-first twenty twenty-five and now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland that, uh, could you scroll, um, yeah. One, the city hereby approves the proposal from NZI Construction dated March twenty twenty-five for asphalt repairs on Hay Street in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Two, funding for this work should be drawn from FY twenty-five capital budget, account number seventy-six thirty-two dash thirty dash eighty dash ten. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon this adoption.
Thank you so much for reading that. I just have a, a question because I thought over there needed the sidewalk and the street, like the road, street repaired. Is this covering both or do you have separate resolutions for that? Or am I misremembering what needed to be done over there?
This is just the street that needs to be done over there. The sidewalk on Glen Arden Parkway between Echoes and Dalewood needs to be replaced. That's the next, that's another resolution.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other questions for this resolution?
Yeah, I do have one other question from Mr. Simpson while we're on this resolution. Mr. Simpson, I mean, did you talk to NZI? And let them know what's going up and down that road? And will, will this, this repair hold with the buses that we got going up and down Hay Street? Did you have a conversation with them about that? Or does that road need to be reinforced?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Yes, sir, Mr. Herring, we did do a walkthrough with the understanding, we actually saw buses go through. I've actually been there with him on two or three occasions. And he does believe that this should be able to provide that. He says he will be able to know clearly, once they mill that area, if there is some additional work that may require some additional reinforcing to the substructure. But he did feel confident with marking out that area. That's why we specifically, or why he specifically marked it as he did.
How much did we put in the budget for this, for this project?
Ultimately, I think overall we had nine hundred and eleven thousand.
This project, you broke, so you broke, I'd say this should have been broken out separately. So you broke it out to the exact number that's in this, in this proposal?
Yes, sir. According, according to NZI's proposal, they have budgeted one hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. I'm just saying, because if they do decide to mill and they realize there may be something that's that may be deteriorating underneath, they need to be replaced. Will we have the money to do that? We probably have to come back to the council to pass another resolution.
Yes, sir.
A change order.
Yes, I do believe that there is contingency that's in place for the overall the money that was set aside for street repair and sidewalk work that, that should account for that. However, I'll definitely make sure we monitor that and make council aware. But it does not, we do not anticipate the need for a change order there. However, you just don't know fully until we fully expose.
Right. Okay. I'm just saying, cause I know one time before we had that street done and they did a, a basic milling and the company that came back after that said, no, it was compromised underneath. They had to lay some stone down there because the bus, one bus was riding up and down there. So, yeah. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. My light went, okay. All right. Councilman Herring, still on you. We are on a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for sidewalk repairs on Glen Arden Parkway from Dalewood Ave to Echoes Ave. Pull it up.
And that's why you're pulling that up. That's the same as the other one. Again, just to make sure that the funding is allocated for that project. So it doesn't get lost in the other projects in the city and that this actually gets done. It's fifty-one thousand dollars. Do you want me to read this one too? All right. A resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction uh, for sidewalk repairs on Glen Arden Parkway from Dalewood Avenue to Echoes Avenue. Whereas the city council of the city of Glen Arden seeks to enhance pedestrian access and safety throughout the community. And whereas the city manager in coordination with the Department of Public Works has identified the segment of Glen Arden Parkway from Dalewood Avenue to Echoes Avenue as a priority for sidewalk repair. And whereas NZI Construction has submitted a proposal dated March twenty-fifth in the amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-two cent to complete sidewalk repairs along this segment. And whereas the proposed work aligns with the city's FY twenty-five capital improvement plan and is eligible to be funded through account number seventy-six and is eligible to be funded through account number seventy-six thirty-two dash thirty dash eighty uh, dash ten. Whereas the council passed resolution four dash, I mean, four dash two, twenty twenty-four on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three to award NZI Construction with an indefinite quantities contract. And resolution four dash twenty-four noted that Prince Charles County had conducted a competitive bidding process and awarded an indefinite quantities contract to NZI Construction Corporation, Prince Charles County Contract ninety-two dash eight H, to perform all road improvements specified in the county contract in the city bid, bidding process in section eight eighteen B that the city charter had been satisfied by the county extending their contract with NZI until December thirty first uh, two thousand twenty-five, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland that, one, the City Council hereby approves the proposal from NZI Construction dated March two, two, two thousand twenty-five for sidewalk repairs on Glen Arden Parkway in an amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-two cent. Funding for this, uh, work shall be drawn from the FY twenty-five capital budget, account number seventy-six thirty-two dash thirty dash eighty dash ten. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out this, the intent of this resolution. Four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon this adoption.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, here none. We'll move on to the next one. What was the next one? One second, this is Church, Church Street. Yeah, got it. It's just on a different screen. All right, this is a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for new sidewalk construction on Church Streets. Are there any questions related to, uh, this resolution? Here none, we'll move on. That was sort of three, right there, Councilman?
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're still on you, Councilman Herring, with, uh, ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five and emergency ordinance to amend ordinance O dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance to regulate the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles and residential and public areas to support community business growth while preserving traffic flow and neighborhood quality of life.
Yeah, um, this legislation, I, I remember we had a lot of pushback at the last meeting about the legislation that was passed that restricted people from parking their personal pickup trucks and vans on the street. And I don't think that was the intent. It was more to focus on work vans. So I just made, um, some basic, um, um, basic adjustments in the legislation to remove that segment from the, uh, legislation. So if you go to page three, can you pull it up and go to page three?
One second. Just three.
Right there, yeah. So basically what I did on C, where it said all work vans, I mean, it said all vans and pickups, I actually added the word work. All work vans and pickups, because that's what's referenced above. And also, um, all work vans and pickups regardless of their use or purpose. And I took out including personal use. So that it would not pull them into the equation, because that was the issue with a lot of the people that came out to the last public hearing. So it's just to try to alleviate that, um, issue that we had of people not being able to park their personal vehicles on the street. Um, but we don't want the work vehicles on the street. So that's what this is.
Okay, Councilwoman Farid.
Thank you, Council President. Um, so speaking to that particular piece of the ordinance, that was intentional, so it was not put in there erroneously. The comments that we received from people prior to drafting that particular ordinance was concern around their ability to move through the streets. They were saying that the work vehicles were obstructing, you know, their, their access. And the reason why we put that portion into the ordinance was because it doesn't matter whether it's being used for work or personal purposes if the issue is the size of the vehicle and it obstructing. So even if it, if it's a pickup truck that has someone's sticker on the side for their business, that shouldn't matter because the issue is that the pickup truck is blocking their ability to move through the street. So I think what we need to revisit is is that's an issue that we're trying to solve, because I, I thought that was one of the primary issues that people had was their ability to navigate the streets, particularly in Ward One, where the streets are narrower and don't really allow for, um, multiple cars to be parked on both sides of the streets. Particularly, particularly, um, pickup trucks and vans and the larger types of vehicles. So if that is not the issue, then we can revisit. But if the issue is the ability of people to move throughout the streets, it wouldn't matter whether it's a work vehicle or a personal vehicle. The vehicle is too large to be, um, to be parked on the street. If that's the issue we're trying to resolve for.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Herring.
Well, my issue is this, that you allow commercial vehicles into the city to park in driveways. Then you tell them they can park their commercial vehicles in the driveway, but they can't park their personal vehicles on the street. So they can put their work vehicles in the driveway from wherever they're working from. And then they're gonna take their personal vehicles and put it in the street because they got a pickup truck. So now you're saying they can't have that in the street. So my thing is, you're not, I mean, the, the legislation isn't fair across the board. That's the problem. If they can't, if you're gonna allow commercial vehicles in the city, which is the biggest issue I have with this piece of legislation, that's why I voted against it, was that you're allowing, allowing commercial vehicles in the street and they're gonna take a space in the driveway. You're allowing, I mean, you're allowing commercial vehicles in the city and they're gonna take a space in the driveway, which means you're gonna put your personal vehicle on the street. And then you're gonna say you can't have your personal pickup truck on the street because it's blocking the way. But the problem is, is that you're allowing commercial vehicles in the city, in, 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 in the city in the first place. That's where the problem is coming in at. This legislation does not look at the situation at hand, which is commercial vehicles should not be in the city. That's it. That's, that's what the whole, that's what the whole issue is with this. Commercial vehicles should not be in the city. The commercial vehicles aren't here. They can park their vans and they can park their, uh, their pickup trucks in the driveway. So if you're gonna not have commercial vehicles in the, in the city and allow them to park their van, their vans and their pickup trucks in the driveway, or you're gonna, a lot of have personal, a lot of have commercial vehicles in the city to be able to park in that driveway and allow people to put their personal vehicles on the street. So that's why I say this legislation was flawed from the very beginning. It doesn't make sense. It's, it's basically putting more vehicles on the street. That's all it's doing. And now you're telling them they can't be on the street. And I gotta, if I go buy me a, 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 a a pickup truck that I use for my everyday, and these pickup trucks today are almost like luxury vehicles, then I can't put that on the street because I gotta my, I gotta put my work vehicle in the driveway. So, I mean, the thing is getting vehicles off the street. This, this legislation puts more vehicles on the street because it allows vehicles in the city that should not be in the city, because the previous piece of legislation said no commercial vehicles in the city of Glen Arden. Now, and this is allowing commercial vehicles. So what do you, what are they, what are the, what are the citizens supposed to do? They can put their commercial vehicles in the driveway, but they can't put their, their, their commercial pickup, I mean, their private, their personal pickup and van on the street. So again, it was an erroneous piece of legislation. That's why you don't do legislations from copy and paste. That's why you look at the situation and you make sure that it addresses the needs of your community and not just a needs of somebody else's community, because I knew this was gonna happen. And I said that when this legislation first came out, that it was gonna pour more vehicles on the street. Now you're putting more vehicles on the street. Now you're saying that it can't have on the street. So where are they gonna park their personal vehicles? I mean, I, I mean, then we're gonna do a permit. We're gonna do a permit parking program that's gonna give, they're allowing them to register their personal vehicles to sit on the street. But now in this legislation is saying it can't be on the street. So it was, it was a flawed piece of legislation. I said that before. It was not a good piece of legislation. And the whole, the whole concept of the, of commercial vehicles is that is they should not be in, they should not be in the city because it's taking up parking. And that's the issue. Commercial vehicles taking up parking in driveways. That's the issue. I said this was gonna happen and that's exactly what's happening. So there's no way in the world you can't, you can't solve this problem. Somebody got to go. So either their personal vehicles gotta get off the street or the commercial vehicles gotta get out their driveways. So I'm trying to figure out which one, which one y'all gonna do. I'm just trying to address, address the situation at hand that we have right now. Just saying, okay, you, they can put their commercial, they can put their commercial vehicles on the street. Again, if they, I mean, if they can put their, um, personal vehicles on the street, if y'all wouldn't allow them to have it commercial vehicles in the driveway, then they should be able to put their personal vehicles on the street. The permit program will go into effect. They can only have two of them on the street. So, I mean, I'm not sure what y'all, I'm not sure what, trying, I mean, it's like, it's like they're making this out of a, 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 I mean, it's really making this more confusing than it really needs to be. But again, like I said, legislation should be tailored to the community not to some, somewhere else. You gotta look and see what you're trying to do. And if you lived over here, you would know actually what's going on. You, I mean, you know, you, you can hear, but you gotta actually see. And I'm, I, I don't think it's fair to have citizens not be able to park their personal vehicles, which are not work vehicles on it, on the street, if they need to park it on the street. Again, when a, when a parking permit program come on board, they're gonna have to choose what they, what they wanna do anyway. Because you're only gonna get two parking permits. So I think the legislation, the way I change it works fine. And people can decide if you want, if you want to park your work vehicle in your driveway, fine, but you're only gonna have two permits to park it on the street. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farid.
Thank you, Council President. I don't know if it's possible to pull up the ordinance that we're referencing, but I think one of the big things that we continue to do uh, is define commercial vehicles in a way that is not defined by the ordinance. The ordinance very clearly states that commercial vehicles are prohibited to be parked in the city of Glen Arden. So when we're talking about the legislation, we should be referencing how it's defined in that legislation. Um, so this is not an issue of whether commercial vehicles should be allowed to park on the street or not. This is strictly on work vehicles. And what that particular piece of the legislation addressed was, it does not matter if you have a car that has a sticker on it that someone's using for work or they're driving it for personal purposes, the size of the vehicle is the same. And again, the issue that was brought by residents in numerous public hearings was the fact that they were being obstructed from moving about the streets, particularly in Ward One because of the size of the vehicles parked on the street. So the size of the vehicle is the issue, not whether or not there's a sticker on the side of the vehicle. In terms of people being able to park their personal vehicles on the street, I'm not sure why parking in their driveways is not an option. If they have a work vehicle and they have a, a, if they have a pickup truck that they use for work and they have the pickup truck they use for personal purposes, that is where the choice needs to be made, is to, you know, where they're gonna park, because in trying to address the issues, the traffic, um, safety concerns that were raised, either of those vehicles parked on the street would raise traffic or safety concerns that were expressed by those who came to the meeting. So, one, we need to figure out what issue we're addressing. Is it the fact that we want to provide free egress for people to drive down the street as they need to without worrying about large vehicles, whether they're used for work purposes or personal purposes? And second is, we need to be consistent in what we're talking about as it relates to commercial vehicles, because that ordinance expressly prohibits commercial vehicles by the definition of what is a commercial vehicle. What that ordinance is restricting, uh, in terms of where they can park is work vehicles and vehicles of the same size that are used for personal purposes. So that it wouldn't be discriminatory. It should not be fair to say to someone who has a business and they have the same exact car as someone who doesn't have a business, that that non-business owner can park their car on the street, but they have to park their car in the driveway. That doesn't, that just doesn't even make sense.
Thank you, Councilman Farid. Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, um, thank you, Council President. Um, I guess when that, that legislation, um, initially came forth, it was to, you know, intended to, um, be a way of relieving congestion on the street, uh, as far as the parking is concerned. Uh, once that, and, and I did support that, uh, that, uh, legislation. However, um, once that it came out, um, I've had, um, you know, like I said, a lot of people have come up, but I had, um, two um, citizens, in particular in Ward One call me and, um, and the, the problem is that people have different, people have different preferences, purposes and, um, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, and their vehicles, some like Jeeps, motorcycles, cars, SUVs, um, pickup trucks. Well, um, two of those had handicap, um, uh, people, people in their homes. Now, the person that is handicapped parks in the driveway. The husband's preference and she has a, uh, uh, a SUV. The husband's preference is a pickup truck. He likes pickup trucks. It's just a personal pickup truck. He doesn't work in it. That's the, the type of vehicle he wants. So she's already said she's not gonna park on the street. So I guess she's gonna get tow tagged or whatever, because she's had, you know, uh, you know, uh, major, you know, major, um, charities and things like that. So the bottom line is she would have to park her SUV on the street. And her husband would have to park his truck in the driveway. And the same with both of these people. And, and so, um, that's, you know, that, that for me made me to reconsider some things. Because, I mean, how does that look, you know? She has to park on the street and she's handicapped. And he's parking in the driveway simply because of a, uh, you know, you know, ordinance that we, um, I guess, uh, worked, but we didn't consider everything. So, um, I think that if, you know, if somebody have a personal, um, preference in a, in a pickup truck versus a SUV or motorcycle or scooter or whatever, they should be able to, uh, park, you know, on the street. In front of, you know, or near their home versus putting their handicapped spouse on the street. And then they have, you know, where they have to go and help every, every time they come in. So that's, um, I think we, it definitely need to be reworked and that we has considered, um, a pickup truck. And I mean, I don't know. And then, you know, some people have vans. Some people just like vans. So, um, the commercial van, I mean, I, I'm, I agree with, I'm Councilman Herring when he said, you know, you're gonna put a, a regular, uh, you know, a a, a pickup truck. And then he, you know, and then one of the families have a pickup truck because, you know, they have wheelchair, um, equipment. So they sometimes put it in the truck when they go certain places. So I think, you know, it did need to be revisited. Thank you.
Councilman Farid.
Yes, so I think the question I have is how are we addressing the congestion or the ability of people to pass through? And what would be the difference between someone who has a pickup, because that's their preference of car to drive versus someone who has a pickup and has a sticker on the side of their car, because that's, they use it for work purposes? What would be the difference? Would we change this resolution to allow the personal ones to be parked on the street and not the work ones? I guess that's the part where I'm not where I'm getting some inconsistencies in, in what we're trying to do, because I thought the issue that we were trying to address was people passing through the streets, recognizing that this ordinance could not please a hundred percent of the people that live in the city. So I guess that my question is back to, uh, Councilman Herring, uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson, how do we address that? If it's the same vehicle, but one is used for personal purposes and one is used for work purposes, how, how would we tell them they could park or not park?
Um, Pastor President?
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess it's, that we, we will have to revisit the whole thing, because I, I think that, uh, every situation is different. And if you know someone is, um, handicapped and they have, you know, medical, um, documentation, um, or, you know, one leg or something like that. I mean, you, you have to accommodate people. I mean, um, because someone has a handicap, I mean, they, you know, uh, uh, we should not, I mean, there could be special situations, I guess I could say. But, um, to put someone that, that, that has, that But um, to put someone that, that, that has, that has a known handicap and, and documented, and have them, you know, park on the street and have to maneuver themselves, you know, all the way to their door, just because Glen Arden says that that, you know, the homeowner can't park the other spouse's truck out there. I mean, we just gonna have to, we gonna have to work it out. Because I, I do not wanna be a part of anything such as that. Um, that, you know, and you know, I've, I've had the calls. I mean, if they want, you know, it, it's legitimate. They and she, and, and when I'm saying, she said, I guess I will be told every day, or she said, I, I cannot, I cannot walk from that street to my door. And, you know, cause her husband would have to park in the driveway. So I don't have a, I mean, right now, if you want, you know, I don't know, just make special revisions, but you need something right now. I don't have it. But I think we need to address it. There's nothing to ignore. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. I think that is, is right, right? I think what, the reason why this ordinance even came about was because there was an, another ordinance that had continued to be tabled, where a majority of us wanted there to be an opportunity for there to be exceptions, to be able to review things on a case-by-case basis. But it was determined that we would not be able to do that. So if we're going to say that we're okay with reviewing situations on a case-by-case basis, I would be fine with that, provided that that applies to everyone, that everyone has an opportunity to have their, their, what they consider to be their s- special uh, situation to be addressed. And given the comments that we've received over a number of years, I do believe that we will have some people who use their vehicles for their livelihood, want to have an exception as well. So I think we just need to figure out where do we, we stand on it. This is not an issue that we can make one decision and it's gonna make everybody in the city happy. And given that this is a work session and we're trying to work through this, I think we need to have some solutions for how we address the actual issues.
Thank you.
Mr. President, ma'am?
Councilman Herring?
Okay, this is, you know, I think the confusion comes in when people try to make definitions out there that are out there. Um, make a definition that isn't what it really is. A work vehicle is a commercial vehicle. A commercial vehicle is any type of vehicle used for business purposes, including transport, transporting goods, um, uh, passengers for hire or profit. That's a commercial vehicle. Any bi, any vehicle that they're using for any business is considered a commercial vehicle. It doesn't go by weight. You can throw weight in there if you want to, but it doesn't have to go by weight. That can be one of the uh, mitigating factors. We even had that in our resolution that the weight, anything over eighty-five hundred pounds is not even allowed in the city. But any other vehicle under eighty-five hundred pounds, which is a co, considered a commercial vehicle or a work vehicle, because a work vehicle and a commercial vehicle are the exact same thing, according to the definitions out here. Um, so that's where the confusion is coming in, because you, you, you're trying to, the, the whole thing is to get commercial vehicles out the city and work vehicles out the city. That's what I'm saying. And that, and, and, and why I say, I did not support this piece of legislation, and yes, I did bring a piece of legislation that actually had any vehicle that's six thousand pounds or less is not allowed in the city, because I wanted the commercial vehicles out of the city so that people can park their personal vehicles in the city. And that's where, that's how you saw this situation. What you've done here is you've allowed commercial vehicles into the city to park in people's driveways while putting their personal vehicles on the street. And now you're saying that their personal vehicles can't be on the street either. So what are they supposed to do? Find a parking space and they, these, they don't use them for work. They use it for, um, for personal use. And I, I, same thing I heard from a resident also about the handicap situation. They have to park their van in the driveway and the, the vehicle that their handicap person was using is not on the street. So they gotta take their walk and walk always past the van, down the sidewalk, out to the street to get into the car to drive, because they gotta put that one on the street. And that makes absolutely no sense. And again, this is a simple si, it isn't, you, you're making it more difficult than it really is. Because again, you're either gonna have commercial vehicles in the city or you're not. Now, you said you want them in the city, so you got them. So y'all voted for that, y'all put them in the driveways. Now the people gotta take their personal vehicles and put them on the street. Now you're saying the same piece of legislation, you can't put those vehicles on the street. So this, this isn't making any sense. This makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. So you're either, you're gonna do one or the other. You wanna not have commercial vehicles and allow people to park their vehicles in their driveway, or you gonna have commercial vehicles and allow them to put their personal vehicles on the street. So I'm not, I'm, I wanna know, that's what this piece of legislation does right here. Work vehicles and commercial vehicles are the exact same thing. You can throw weight in here all you want to. We got weight in this piece of, in this ordinance right here, eighty-five hundred pounds, and that's exactly why I didn't support this piece of legislation, because it's confusing. And I think it's unfair to people and the citizens in here who have a personal vehicle, they wanna park on the street. Now they can't do that either. But yet you still putting more vehicles on the street than we had before. Because you're allowing more vehicles in the city, which are commercial, which means you're putting more vehicles on the street. So sometimes you gotta walk the neighborhood and come out here and talk to the people. I just, we just heard from a citizen just recently. She's highly upset she came back out of her driveway. And this legislation is putting more cars on the street. And even if you don't have, and even if you don't have a pickup truck or a, 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 or, or a van to park in the driveway, you're still putting a car on the street. And that's where the problem's coming in that. And here we go, also, we running along with this parking permit program. That's, that should, that should be in place. We still trying to get one letter out after three months. Because everybody wanna go, go, run around on a letter that should be one page and out there, and out there already letting people know it's coming. And we still trying to beat that drum and try to get that uh, taken care of. So I, I just don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to the citizens. I don't think, you know, when you're not faced with the situation, you don't understand what the situation actually is. I'm faced with the situation. I see that from the citizens over here. I see the, the congested parking lot. I've seen the house catch on fire and we had to move cars so the fire truck could come up here. But now you're saying they can't even put their personal vehicles on a, on, on the street. But yeah, you can bring, but people can bring their commercial vehicles in the city. So they can bring their commercial vehicles in here to make money off of them, when they can take that personal, that commercial vehicle and park it down in a lot they can rent right down the street to park that in. But yeah, you have your personal vehicle and you gotta put that on the street and risk it getting towed. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not understanding none of this at all.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I mean, I still not hearing an answer to the simple question of if it's the same exact vehicle and one is used for personal purposes and one is used for work purposes, what would we have them to do if the issue is the ability for cars to pass through? I'm also not understanding the logic of there being so many cars on the street now because cars have to park in the driveway. I would think that cars being parked in the driveway would reduce the number of cars on the streets. I'm, I'm not following that line of logic. Also, in terms of the definition, we are not making up our own definition. The definition of commercial vehicles that is in this ordinance is the definition that is used by the Department of Transportation. If we want to create our own definition of what commercial vehicles is, then that's something that can be explored, but to say that we're just sort of willy-nilly defining what a commercial vehicle is, is misleading and it's just false, because the definition that we're using is exactly from the Department of Transportation, which is the federal agency that oversees transportation. So I think they would know what a commercial vehicle is. If we want to expand that definition, that's fine, but to say that we don't have a clear definition or that it's a baseless definition is false. Um, so, I'm happy to make any amendments to this resolution that will be more helpful to citizens, but we just have to recognize that not every citizen has the same concern over this. So how do we address what the issues are for the majority of citizens? And if we're going to have an exception process, what would that exception process look like? Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Mr. President?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Herring?
Yes, let me just say this, so we can be quite clear, so I can be, I don't wanna mince my words. You, this legislation allows commercial vehicles into the city. This legislation says you can park your commercial vehicle in your driveway, your work vehicle, commercial vehicle and work vehicles are the exact same thing. Anybody wanna Google it, look it up. They'll tell you what a work vehicle is, what a commercial vehicle is. Any vehicle that's used for hire or for profit is considered a commercial vehicle, work vehicle, same difference. Um, so yes, we are mincing words here. It's confusing on your part. Um, because again, what they do in, in the federal government, they throw weight limits on it. Even the county throw weight limits on what they consider as a commercial vehicle. There's a lower than, than, than uh, than the uh, than the um, federal government. The federal government says what they do for their, for their reasons. County does, I mean, state does what they do for their reasons. County does what they do for their reasons. They'll throw a weight limit on it. We can throw, we can say whatever we want as a commercial vehicle. And the problem is this, again, when you have a commercial vehicle that goes into a driveway, that means your personal vehicle goes out on the street. That's what I mean when you're allowing more vehicles in this, in, in the city, you're putting more vehicles in, on the street. It's just, it's just common sense. If I have three vehicles and I say I can bring in the fourth vehicle and I gotta put that fourth vehicle in my driveway, then the other vehicle going on the street. I mean, I don't think that's very hard to understand. You know, it's just like one plus one is two, you add one more, it becomes three. You gotta find some way to put that third car. It's gonna go on the street. It's not, I mean, again, this is what, this is, this piece of legislation, I, 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 as I say before, was not a good piece of legislation. It's an exception, this is legislation. I said it before, it was a friendship piece of legislation. And that's what happens when you do legislation for friends. This is what happened. Everybody else suffers. So now everybody else is suffering because we wanted to, we wanna bring commercial vehicles into the city, when we don't need to have commercial vehicles in the city. Again, I, I, I said that before, and that's why my legislation was gonna get them out of the city. Then you can park your commercial vehicle, I mean, you can park your personal vehicles in the city. And we wouldn't have this issue. But when you try to sit there and try to put a piece of, piece of legislation to help out people that you know and your friends and all this other stuff, this is where we run into a problem. Because you're not looking at the community as a whole, and that's what happened just now, is that we didn't look at the community as a whole. So now a big chunk of the community is being, being uh, uh, affected by a piece of legislation that's gonna help a few, put their, keep their commercial vehicles in front, in, in that, on their property. And that's what we're running into. So the way you solve it is that you ban all commercial vehicles in the community and allow people to have their personal vehicles in the community. That's what you do. That's if you want, if you, if you're serious about solving the problem. Because again, you, you, you bringing more vehicles in the city, and now you're putting them on the street and you're, the legislation clearly says, no personal vehicles can be on the street if it's a van or a pickup truck. So, I can bring my personal vehicle in here all I want to and park it in my driveway, but they can't bring their commercial vehicle, or if they even have a handicap van, it can't be on the street. It can't be in the driveway. That may get towed. So they can't even register that under the permit parking program. So according to this legislation, any vehicle that's, that falls under this legislation cannot even be registered under our, under the permit parking program if we have one. So that's the easy fix. That's, that's the way you fix it. You know, you look at the situation, you see what, what, what's best for the greater good and not best for the, the few that you know. And that's where we have a problem at, because again, I, I, I hear people, I see them. I drive through this neighborhood all the time. I see the effects of what's going on. I see these vans pulling up in these driveways. We have more vans now in, in Ward One than we ever had before. They're just flooded into Ward One. But that's okay, because again, our house values don't really matter, because again, we're Ward One, I guess. That's what, that's what, that's what I feel. Because again, I, as I said, the vans, the commercial vehicle should not be in the city. You're adding more vehicles to the city, I mean, to the, to the, to the city, and that's gonna put more vehicles on the street. And that's what we're doing. This is a piece of legislation. These, these two changes that I made right here will fix the problem. A work vehicle, you have, you have a definition in, in your legislation, you have a definition of a work vehicle. A work vehicle is defined as a light-duty vehicle used for business and professional purposes. Okay, so it's the same difference, it, which is not classified as a commercial vehicle under Maryland law and meets the following criteria. So you have a definition, then you have a work vehicle. So I'm just like, I mean, it's your legislation.
Yes, it, it is my legislation, and that's why I'm saying it's already defined what's in there, but um,
And that's why it's wrong.
But also, what, I would like to address this because it continues to come up. And I'm just gonna ask you point-blank, Councilman Herring, when you say it's being done for friends, who are you referring to? And are you talking about me? Because I, I'm, I'm very curious to know why you keep saying this. Um, people who live in our neighborhoods, people who live in the city of Glen Arden are constituents, and they come to us with issues, just as you said, that someone called you and you know, expressed their concerns to you. So I'm, I would like to know why you continue to say that this legislation was brought forward because it was done to appease somebody's friend. Are you talking about me? And if so, what friend are you talking about?
I refuse to answer that question.
Okay.
On, 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 on the thing, on, on, on the point is that I'm not trying to go into a back and forth with you, but it is a friendship piece of legislation.
Oh, well, you just continue to bring that up and it is no such thing. As a matter of fact, the biggest complaints that I get about what you were proposing and your previous ordinance came from people in Ward One. So it, it absolutely did. And I have the, I have the receipts to, to demonstrate that. But nonetheless, this is about creating a legislation that can work for as many residents in the city of Glen Arden as possible. If there are compromises that we need to make so that it can feel fair to people, then we should do that. But I'm still not hearing how we balance what we were trying to do, because the council and the majority did not agree with prohibiting commercial work vehicles completely. That is why the legislation that Councilman Herring put forward continued to sit out there for many, many months, I think even years. So, what we need to do is not revert back to that, because that's not what the council wanted to support. But, you know, the council also can choose to vote differently. But again, if the issues are the same for what we were trying to address, the ability for cars to pass through the streets and not be obstructed by large vehicles, my question remains, if the vehicle is large and obstructing them, does it matter if it's for personal or for work, or if you want commercial purposes? Does that matter? And I'm still not getting an answer to that question. What does it matter if it's the same exact vehicle? If it has a work sticker on it, or if it doesn't? What is the difference?
Councilman Herring, if you can, if, if, if your response is gonna answer that, because I, I, I agree, I don't wanna get into a back and forth, but if we can answer each other's questions.
Let me just say that. The legislation was passed. The legislation basically says, no commercial vehicles or work vehicles, work vehicles can be on the street. But you can have a work vehicle in your driveway. That's what it's saying. So that means that you're gonna put another vehicle on the street that would normally be in your driveway. So you're not, this legislation doesn't address any of the issues that, at hand that we were dealing with. I said that before when we did this. You know, I said that before. It doesn't, it doesn't address the issues, because again, you're saying no, I mean, you, you're saying you can bring a work vehicle in, it's gonna go on the street. Okay, so that's on the street, that's on the street. So we, we still got cars on the street, but not alleviating the process. This legislation doesn't do that. So that, you're asking a question of, 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 I guess of me. And it's your piece of legislation that, that's putting more cars on the street. You should be, you should be trying to figure it out. You should be asking yourself, okay, if I, if I say this family can put their work vehicle in their driveway and this car go on the street, that's another car on the street. So what are we gonna, how are we alleviating the problem? Yeah, my legislation actually fa, was, my legislation actually followed what was in place for the last thirty years. The last thirty years, our charter said, if you had, our code said, the ci, there are no commercial vehicles are allowed in the city of Glen Arden. The only thing I was trying to do is put a limit on, or weight limit on what it is, because that's what we ran into when we go to court. They says there's no weight limit, so they always revert to the, revert to the state. So that's what was going on for years before Wilmore was here, before War, War One was here. They had uh, ordinance in place that said no commercial vehicle in the city of Glen Arden. That's what it has been. And, and then you bought a piece of legislation to allow them back into the city. So now the commercial vehicles are allowed in the city. And that's, and you're putting them in the driveways, which is putting a car on the street. And I'm not understanding this. If I bring a car, if I, if you say I can bring a van in, that's just like me. I got three cars. If I had one in my driveway, I bring a van in and put it in my driveway, I can put that car on the street. Somebody else do that, they gonna put a car on the street. Other people come in, they do that, they do the same thing. They put cars on the street. It puts more cars on the street. So you're not alleviating the problem with this piece of legislation. You're as, actually exacerbating the problem. So I'm not understanding what you cannot see with this piece of legislation that is adding to the total vehicle population, which is what you're doing, versus um, taking away from it. But then you do, but then you do take away from it, because you're telling them they can't have their personal vans or, or pickups on the street. So a business owner who's making money for hire, is making a profit, can park his vehicle in his driveway, but a person who has a van, handicap van, or handicap pickup, who may have two or three, can only park one of them in the driveway and the other two gotta be parked. can only park one of them in the driveway, and the other two gotta be parked in a, in a, I guess, a reserve lot or a pay lot. Because they can't be in the city, because this says, no personal vehicles, vans or 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 personal pickups can be in the street. So, I I see what the problem is, obviously, you know, you know, I mean. That's, like I said, I'm I'm trying to alleviate the problem, I'm trying to give people back their rights to be able to park on a public street with their personal vehicles. Because I think they should have that right to do that, you know, but yet not allow commercial vehicles, and not say they should not be in the city. So again, the is what I'm, what I'm proposing, we'll put personal vehicles on the street, once they personal vehicles can get on the street, then we'll have to deal with the permit parking program, and that would deal with whatever else comes comes down the pipe. If there if there's too many on the street, that's what it is, it's a two-pronged approach. If you're gonna do this, but we can't even get the permit parking program going, because we're still trying to get a letter done for three months. So, that's what, that's where we are with this, that's why I see it, we're not, I mean, this piece of legislation was not a good piece of legislation. And it did not do what it was meant to do, it actually exacerbated the problem, adding more vehicles to the community and putting putting and then and then penalizing those who don't have a business. So if you don't have a business, you can't park your uh commercial vehicle. I mean, you can't, if you don't have a business, you can't park your personal van or your personal pickup on the street, but yeah, the person who has a business can park one, can park in the city. How is that fair? It's not.
But you're conflating two different issues.
You don't understand what you what you propose.
So, so point of order, so Councilman Herring does have the floor, but I think we need to get to a resolution. Like, I know we have our different opinions of what should be, what shouldn't be. But if we can work cohesively on, alright, what is the solution moving forward? Those are more uh value valuable talking points than just beating the same old drum of what our opinion is. So I I think that Councilwoman Fareed had a, it's just trying to understand, alright, so. Um, and what was your question again, Councilwoman Fareed, so I can state it correctly?
Yeah, because there are a couple of issues here, right, we're dealing with the the number of vehicles, right? If someone has two vehicles now, and they're not using their driveway, both of those cars are on the street. If one of them is a pickup, we're saying you have to put that in your driveway, so that's one less cart on the street, that's not more cars on the street, so I'm I'm not understanding where the more cars on the street comes from, unless people are now buying more cars than they had to start with. But if they have two cars, or even if they have three cars. Are the three cars on the street now, and we're saying you have to put one of them in the driveway, like, this shouldn't shift anything around how many cars they have on the street in terms of adding more cars to the street. This would remove cars from the street, so that's the piece that I'm not understanding, how we're resolving that. The other piece is around, if you have two vehicles of the same size, even the same exact car. And one is used for personal purposes, and one is used for work purposes, are we okay with saying the personal one can be parked on the street, but the work one has to be parked in the driveway? And if we're okay with that, then I would say we're not addressing the issue that it seems a number of residents came up to speak about. Being that they cannot pass through the streets because these cars are the, these vehicles are too large. So just speaking to the size of them, I don't think it matters whether it's for personal purposes or for work purposes. It's the fact that the vehicle is large for the size of the streets. So I think that's, you know, two different issues, and I'm not sure how we're resolving for those with these changes. So you're exactly right, Council President, I'm trying to get to a place of resolution and a solution for the new issues that are arising as a result of this ordinance being in place.
I proposed a change on this amendment to this ordinance, and I said, I mean, I'm not even gonna rehash this. You can either make the change, or you can make another change, but something needs to be done. I I I took a, I took a stab at it, because I see how unfair it is to our citizens to say their personal vehicles can't be on the street. While commercial vehicles can be in the city, so that's it, I'm I'm not, I'm not going back and forth with this. I made the change, and this change will actually allow people to put their personal vehicles on the street, their personal vans and pickups on the street. And it also allows y'all to have the commercial vehicles in the city that y'all wanted, so that day kills two birds with one stone.
Council President?
Yes.
I would, I would like to propose that based off of what Councilwoman Ferguson, Council Vice President Ferguson put forward. I think that there should be a a way for there to be an exception, so for that um, resident who has the situation with the handicap, that would be something that we would evaluate on a case by case situation and make an allowance for that, but I would not want to say that um, blanket wide, we would keep vehicles of those size on the street. Because then it does not address the very real issue that other residents came to the podium and spoke about their inability to pass through. Particularly in emergency situations, right, if we have emergency vehicles trying to get through, and you got two vans parked on the street. You know, one on each side, that's gonna be difficult for that emergency vehicle to get through, and it doesn't matter if that van is for personal purposes or for work purposes, the size of it is going to be the size of it. So I would recommend that we keep the ordinance that has already been voted by a majority of the council. And make um an allowance for exceptions on a case by case basis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed.
May I, let me, may I comment?
One, 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 one second, uh, because Vice President Ferguson had her hand up first.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, um. I mean, I I don't even know what to say at this point, because I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, anybody can, I mean, I did say that. But I mean, my my the main thing is, um, you know, again, you know, we got a handicap people. Uh, people that have handicaps, that have to have people, um, and also the other thing is, um, is, um, another, um. I forgot about this, um, another resident, they they is, they have two trucks, that's what they drive. So, the, they have to decide who puts the truck in the driveway and who trade their car, their truck in to get aside of or. I mean, I I, you know, I'm just rethinking it, you know, and I really did, like I said, a lot of times we bring to the table, that's what work, work sessions are for, but just as many people that came up, and I understand, you know, with the, um, you know, their business, um, trucks. Um, there, you know, there were people, and then there were some that came and, um, uh, two, uh, people came and they left. And they live in War Three, and so, um, you know, I talked to them as well. And so, again, their their concern was, you know, why do I have to park my truck in the, you know, in the driveway? And they got five commercial trucks right down the street on on the other side, you know, and they, you know, and and so they're, the commercial, that's, a lot of people are complaining about the commercial vehicles, um. And so, again, I don't know how we're gonna come up with a criteria. I mean, I know, you know, people that have, uh, medical situations, that's one, but how are we gonna address the fact that maybe, you know, a resident have two trucks, two pickup trucks or a truck and a van? I mean, we can't tell them to to trade their vehicle then, but they're personal. And again, um, the other thing is, what Councilman Herring said that, um, no commercial van, um, commercial vehicles, um, been on the book for years, um. I mean, to to him say before War One, you know, I didn't know that, but I mean, we just either need to revisit it, or I mean, I don't see a problem with his, um, what he he did to change that, because, um. I just, you know, someone told me that I had to, I couldn't park my vehicle, um. You know, on the streets, I would have a problem with that, you know, if I had, if I needed, um, someone else that had a medical problem, need to park it in the driveway. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know, um, where we are with this, are we, uh, is it passed, or are we gonna revisit it? Or table, what we're gonna do, because this part, we need to do something, so. Because they're still calling, and you know, I did, um, suggest that if we, in motion to put it on, um, um, the table, and, uh, Councilman Herring, you know, put forth that, but I'm still getting called, like, so, you know, what what what, you know, what's going on, so, am I gonna have to park on the street? You know, and it'd be a handicap, so we still need to decide what's gonna do, because because people are still calling. Me, wanting to know, did we come to a conclusion, that's all we're gonna bring to the work session, so, um, I don't know, and they're not even on here, so. We need to come up with something, um, that's all, because at this point, it's frustrating to me, because we can't please everybody, but at the same time, um, we have to do something. And like you said, that the the parking permit, they're coming up as well, so. And and another thing too, is that for the one this handicap, for instance, um, if she moves her SUV on the street and her husband moves his truck in the driveway, it's still the same number of vehicles, they just walk places, so that's not um, it's not like, you know, both of them are in the driveway, and and a lot of the, especially over in War One. There's, um, most of the, um, the driveways that only accommodate one, um, vehicle. And I don't know of any, any, um, homeowner over here, you know, pretty much anywhere for the most part, they have a driveway and do not utilize it. I mean, they just, their their driveway is just empty, uh, and they just park on the street, so, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, and 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 perhaps this just involves us just going back to the drawing board to think about how will we handle exceptions, um, you know, what will work best for the cities is for the city. Uh, it's awesome to understand that this does not affect HOA governed streets, uh, because they have their own, um, uh, parking rooms and laws, um, but just need some more thought, Councilman Herring has this, uh, resolution as, you know, what he proposes, his thought in a fix, and and others, uh, I'm sure have, you know, opinions on this as well, but it just takes us, going back to the drawing board, you know. Talking with Mr. Green to see, you know, how could we enforce, um, all the parking, uh, regulations that we have on a docket, um, and how it can all work together so that, you know, people can get up and down the street, uh, freely and out of their driveways freely. Um, understanding also that we're not going to be able to satisfy a hundred percent of the problem, there might be one or two people who disagree on one side and on and again on the other, um. But, you know, this is what the work session is for, to be able to to kind of work through things, if it's too much, then go back to the drawing board to to bring it back up to, um, work behind the scenes, so that we can present something to the citizens that is doable. Alright, so with that.
Mr. President, may I just say one thing about this before we move on from this? One thing you don't want to do is start doing exceptions. The law need to be clear, concise across the board, nobody should have to sit in front of a board and and explain why they need a handicap space in front of their house, or they need to park, be able to park their vehicle on the street because of this and that. What 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 makes you think somebody want to come up in front of a council and say, I gotta come up here and I got, I'm handicapped, I need this, and then we want to sit there and make a determination? They shouldn't have to beg to be able to park on a public street. So you don't do, you start, there we go again, that's where you start having bad legislation, when you start putting in exceptions. You make the legislation fair as far as part, as fair as you can, but you don't start doing, um, exceptions. Because who's going to determine who's right, who should and who shouldn't get it, because I guarantee you, there's gonna be some unfairness around that too. Unless you go in there some strict criteria, and I don't think you should even look at having exceptions, you need to just my thing is salvage, I mean, don't try to salvage a piece of legislation that wasn't good, just go back to the drawing board and do it right. That's what I'm saying, so that's my, that's my piece, thank you.
Thank you, and and to that point, I I personally think that one of the, uh, inefficiencies of uh, the way the council is set up in the city of Glen Arden is that we legislate and we operate. And it's very tough to get efficiencies if we're trying to do both. Now, I certainly agree with you that I don't think anybody should come before the council and beg for anything. Uh, that shouldn't even have to come before us, I think, um, if we write a policy or a resolution. Uh, if we have exception, I I certainly understand, uh, what Vice President Ferguson was talking about, if if there is a handicap person, um, and they, that will put that handicap person at a disadvantage by putting their van in their um, their driveway and their car on the street, um, and they need to get to their car, well. I mean, in in my opinion, that's, that's a no brainer, if they have a handicap sticker, then then that's the waiver that they can have a, um, a, um, parking stick on the car, allowing it to be on the street, if we decide to go that way. Um, but I I certainly don't think that we need to be, um, on the operations side of this, just the legislative side of it. Um, but see where we go. Alright. So that was two. Um, one, two. Okay, a resolution authorizing CPJA to complete the feasibility study for the new police building, uh, Mr. Simpson? Is Mr. Simpson on?
My apologies, um, indeed, good evening, I did receive the feasibility study from, uh, proposal from CPJA, um, for your consideration. I think we just received it on Friday, if I'm not mistaken. And it is for the council's consideration, uh, the amount, I believe I did send that over, I'm trying to pull it back up, I apologize, um, the amount, uh, state for for the feasibility study. Um, just for that particular police building is fifty six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I think it's roughly half, not more than half of what was originally proposed, um, for that one section. Um, CPJ also has providing an option to provide existing town hall renovations and a rearranged for the police department. They're saying that, uh, the actual police building, as a standalone, is, uh, being requested, uh, would definitely a few years away from that. Um, and with that being said, they wanted to offer, uh, that other option. Uh, I do believe that was emailed to council for your review, uh, and for your consideration.
Thank you, are there any comments on this resolution? Yes, Councilman Herring.
Why do we keep pouring good money at the, I mean, just I'm, I again, and I and I spoke to Mr. Simpson earlier about this, I'm not understanding what we doing feasibility study on again, we already know what lots can be built on. So what is the purpose of this feasibility study, to say, to say we can build on lots that we already got a feasibility study on that we know we can build on, because they're buildable lots, because they already had buildings on. So why are we gonna pay eighty nine thousand dollars, we could be using that on another side, some sidewalks or some streets somewhere. Only thing you need to be worried, only study you need to see is how much it would cost to bump out the back of that building, if we were, if we were to connect the police department to that. And I'm telling you right now, that the rate we're going, we're never gonna get it, because with the tariffs has gone into place, and the prices going up as high as they are. We'll never have enough money to build anything at this rate. We keep on, we keep on dragging stuff on and on and on and on, until we're gonna price ourselves right out of being able to do anything. I'm not understanding, again, what this feasibility study is, why are we gonna get another feasibility study to sit there and say we, you can build a building on a building, on a lot that already had a building on it? That makes absolutely no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Mr. Simpson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be wrong.
I'm sorry, you're breaking, you're you're going in and out, Councilman Jones.
I'm sorry, isn't, isn't, um, what's wrong with this thing, why does it act like this, I'm sorry, um. Mr. Simpson, isn't a feasibility study required to build anything nowadays that you have to, you know, uh, present this before you, uh, before you do your architects? And the building, I'm sorry, the the piece of land that already had a building on it, which piece of land was was that? Is it the one across the street from the city hall, across from the goal room, or the one across from the, um?
You don't feel good, baby? Just tired.
Across from the American. Across from the American Legion.
Um, so I believe the area between where we are and American Legion, I don't believe anything has been actually built on that area. I believe, uh, was a building located off of MLK next to the, and between the church and the Horace Dickey area. Um, I do believe that there's something there, but I do know that we also, uh, are looking at the farmer's market, which we have a resolution for there. I think a feasibility study provides the city with some actionable item options. If I'm able to find the previous or other feasibility studies, uh, that would help. Um, but yes, uh, to, for, for construction of a new facility, um, you, you want to be able to ensure that the police department operations in a space conducive to modern law enforcement functions, um, as well as enhancing officers' overall morale, service delivery. Uh, the, the study gives the city a solid foundation to pursue, um, or take those necessarily, uh, necessary steps. Now, there has been a previous feasibility study, um, and I can be directed towards that, then we can certainly utilize that, um, in conjunction. But I do believe there needs to be some sort of investment, uh, relative to dealing with what we are contending with now. I don't, I don't have information, uh, on a previous feasibility study. Um, but again, that would be helpful to be able to share with them as well. And please note that the, if you look, now I do apologize for weakness of providing that information. Um, the actual feasibility study is fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. If you incorporate the additional twenty-four thousand, uh, that CPJ was recommending for, uh, renovations to rearrange, uh, some space downstairs, uh, to provide the police department with some relief, along with their, um, their meeting schedule not to exceed eighty-nine hundred, then, then you get that total price. But the actual lump sum basis for the feasibility study is, as I said, is fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, um, uh, that they were able to provide on the floor.
Thank you, and I probably, uh, and I'm not sure about this either, but I will find out, um. Uh, once we accept the, uh, monies from the state that they, uh, set aside for us that we've, uh, garnered, I'm sure they're gonna require a feasibility study also and up to date one. If, if that, you know, but, um, like I said, that's something that I will, um, address and bring back to the council and, um, or some, or another council person or someone can bring that to the council and let us know that this is what, uh, is required, uh, in accepting those funds. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, and I might have missed it, one second, Councilman Harry. Uh, well, it addresses, I think, what you were talking about, Councilman Harry. So where's the feasibility study that was done before? I, I think you mentioned that, Councilman Harry, right?
Yep, it should be up there. She went there in the city, but, you know, I'm not sure, but I don't, you know, things been put in the stores, things been found away. I had, I, I found a resolution for it, the, uh, study wasn't attached to, the study approved it, but I gotta find out where the actual study is, cause I know we have. So it is there, but go ahead.
Okay, and Mr. Simpson, have you guys found it? Or do you have it?
Yeah, no, sir, I, we have not been able to find that.
Okay, alright, thank you, that's my, my only question. Alright.
Okay.
May I, Mr. President?
Sure.
Mr. Simpson, have you looked?
Sir, we, we have gone through, uh, gone, gone through everything in the city manager's office. Uh, I am working with the council clerk to try to, uh, gather through all of the pending resolutions and unresolved resolutions. So I will say, yes, uh, we, we have looked and we're continuing to, uh, look in the locations that we believe we might be able to find those, but not, to no avail as of yet.
So have you, have you recorded any boxes from Iron Mountain, where we have tons of store, I mean, tons of files stashed?
No, I was gonna say, the other option is to go through Iron Mountains, um, and what's stored there. Um, so no, sir, that, that has not taken place.
Okay, so it's a two thousand and eight document, and you think it's still up in the building? I mean, it could have been put in store.
Uh, no, I'm not saying I think it's in the, I'm just saying that I'm definitely looking and I'll definitely go through Iron Mountain and try to go back to those dates uh, that you just mentioned, two thousand and eight, to, to look up that particular information.
Okay, also, let me ask a question, you said something about that number, that eighty-nine thousand dollars encompasses both the poli, the police building and something else?
Sir, uh, CPJ has added additional recommendation. Um, when they came out, they said that, uh, the likelihood of getting a standalone building is, is definitely a minimum of three to five years, uh, away or in the making. Uh, they are recommending some options relative to providing some sort of relief for the police department to be able to expand with what we existing, what we currently have, uh, until that particular, um, if, if the direction of the city is to go with the standalone building, um, to be able to provide some sort of relief, uh, in, in the meantime. Um, it was just a particular suggestion that they did attach to the proposal that I was able to email to you all today.
Okay, that's another problem, I'm having you email in these proposals the day of a meeting, so we can't even look at them. So what are they proposing to look at in the way of additional space for that twenty-four thousand dollars?
Um, so what they are proposing, uh, CPJ and Oculus Architects will perform the following tasks. CPJ team will collect, uh, all existing building data and floor plans. CPJ will coordinate with the police chief and the staff to rearrange the office space. CPJ will develop a floor plan based on the police department's requests slash needs developed to the layout using space efficiency. The revised floor plan will use the existing building floor plan and update to show the new layout. CPJ will identify any impact on the existing electrical, mechanical, and wet utilities impact based on the proposal layout. And CPJ will provide a graphical presentation of the layout. Third, uh, three-day view is appropriate rendering. Um, three D view, I'm sorry, uh, and CPJ, uh, will provide a detailed cost estimate for the proposed layout. Um, uh, only excluding currently building permits, uh, HVA, HVAC design, surveying, easement, and any deep, deep eye sight role assessments or permits.
Okay, um, so let me ask this question. So you have them doing another feasibility study on basically expanding the police department in the space that we already have, correct?
No, I do not. CPJ, uh, after putting in the request to follow up with a feasibility study for a police, uh, building, um, they are offering this particular option, uh, as far as task two, to be able to provide relief for the police department. They did come out to meet, uh, they met the chief as well as the police department and did a walkthrough. Uh, and then, uh, per their recommendation, knowing how far out, they provided this particular option, uh, relative to that. Uh, but from my understanding, we're looking at fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a feasibility study, uh, for a new, uh, police building.
Uh, again, Mr. Simpson, you just said they walked through, what space are they looking at? Renovating existing, exist, existing town hall renovation and rearrange for the police department, what space are they looking at?
Uh, they're talking about the nutrition center space, uh, as well as.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you, cause you ain't gotta go no further, you ain't gotta go no further. Cause if you think we're gonna put our seniors out of, out of their space, you got to be mistaken. And I told you that before, what makes you think that we're gonna sit here and put the seniors out where they, where, where they can meet and play cards and they can come and commune to, to expand the police department? You think that's right?
No, I'm, I'm.
There's something wrong here, there's something seriously wrong here, because again, our seniors have sacrificed a lot in this community. And to give them a place where they can come and play cards and, and, and meet and commune with each other, that's the least we can do for them. And you're gonna sit there and say you're gonna take the nutrition center and expand the police department and move the, and, and basically kick the seniors out of their space? Out of the senior nutrition center? You're gonna get council members, there's one coming here and just gonna support that and gonna, and, and gonna vouch for it all the way? But I'm telling you, this one council member is just not gonna ever sit there and think you're gonna expand that police department and take up that, they're going to nutrition center and put those seniors out so that they, they can't, they can't meet anywhere. You got to be kidding me.
Well, no, sir, I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting.
Uh, Chief Bryant, um, let me clear that up real quick.
One second, one, one word, I'm sorry, I was on mute, I was on mute, so let me just stop sharing. There was a point of order on the floor. Councilman Jones, what's your point of order?
The disrespect to the, uh, city manager is not necessary. We don't, we don't need to be respectful to everyone. I understand, you say it's passion, but it's disrespect to talk to someone in that manner.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
President.
Um.
Are you finished, Ms., uh, Mr. President, may I? Because I'm gonna tell you this, and I've said this before, no one's, I'm a grown man, sixty-one years old. Ms. Jones and nobody else is gonna tell me how to speak to anybody. I speak to you how I wanna speak to you, if it's my passion, that's my passion. You don't tell me how to talk, I'm, you know, my parents are up in Harmony Cemetery. So don't nobody sit here and tell me what I'm going, what I should and should not be saying, what's disrespectful, what's not disrespectful. It's a lot of things that she does, she's done this disrespect. But I'm gonna say, I say, yes, I'm passionate, hold up, no, yes, I'm passionate about the seniors, because it seems like they're getting left behind while everybody else is doing everything else. And y'all seem like taking part of the senior nutrition center to sit there and, and, and do something, yeah, I'm, I'm upset about that. And why, and why she doesn't care about the seniors, that's her, that's her prerogative, I do. So thank you, Mr. President.
So, thank you, Councilman Harry. What I will say is that though Councilman Harry was passionate, I didn't see a personal attack on Mr. Simpson um, as relates to, um, what he was talking about, he was talking, he was passionate about whatever he was talking about, but I don't think there was any personal attacks in there. Uh, however, I, and so that's that. Um, I will say that it is probably unfair to say that we're moving forward with a plan to, I mean, this is the first time I've heard about it, to kick senior citizens, senior citizens out of, uh, the nutrition center. Certainly, this is not city manager Simpson's plan to do. So I, I, I mean, I recognize the passion, but I, I don't think the, there's any fault here or any fault that lies with Mr. Simpson. I think that that was a, uh, one of the options outlined by CPJA, uh, if I am correct. But it's not something that we are proposing, and certainly I don't think any council members here, if you even have a chance to, to, uh, review it, to participate in, in such a, a proposal, so that was just an option. That's not to say that, that we're, we're going to go with that option. And that is not an option that Mr. Simpson is proposing for us to go with, I don't think. Uh, he's just giving us all of the options that CPJ, uh, put forward. Now, I want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Simpson, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm trying to, uh, uh, provide you with that particular information. I think, Mr. Harry, you and I have had some discussions relative to that, and I certainly agree, uh, with supporting the seniors. I know I'm, uh, from my director of public work role to my current role, uh, I tried my best to adhere to, uh, serving them on Mondays and Wednesdays consistently and to provide them an opportunity to do so. So I definitely share your passion in wanting to care for our seniors. And if this was a plan that you did go with, I certainly look at other options to provide them, uh, another space or facility, if the council as a whole decides to do so. Uh, but thank you, I do appreciate your passions relative to that.
And I just want to say, Mr. Simpson, that it is your job to give the council all of the information, even if the information is not advantageous to our citizens. You report the information to us so that the council, from a legislative perspective, can then make a determination on which way you want to go. So thank you very much. Uh, Chief Bryant, you were saying something in the middle of a point of order.
Oh, yes, um, yeah, let's speak about passion, um, nobody is more compassionate about the citizens than I am. Um, and, um, that wasn't the case in reference to this. Um, CPJ saw, um, spoke about the building, how long would it take, and seeing how many officers we have and seeing that the officers didn't have a place, um, even if they changed their uniforms and so forth, they was giving us some recommendations, um, until the new building is built. Um, one suggestion was taking apart a nutrition center and making it into a roll call area, which will also be amenable to the citizens, um, to continue to do what they're doing. Um, keep in mind, when I was acting city manager, um, I got with Mr. Smallwood and we continued to try to get that, um, this situation we have now with them playing cards, and I go by on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays and talk with them on a regular basis and buy lunch and everything else for them, so it's not anything about kicking the seniors out. Um, so that information, let's nip that in the butter right now. Um, so about passion, it's about sharing and making it amenable to everyone, so that's where we are. CPJ, um, just brought that as an option to renovate and make it more amenable to the police department, um, and tell they get, um, a police building. Another thing is, um, Senator Benson is fighting very hard to try to get some more grant money to get a police building, um. And with her fighting for that, um, it requires a feasibility study, um, it requires that the money that she gotten in the past, um, for them to start using that money so she can get the money that she's fighting for now. So, um, that's why the city manager and myself, um, working diligently with her, um, to try to get the funding and try to get things moving ahead, um. I speak with her on a regular basis, and the first question she asked me, Chief, where are we with the police building? And, um, we keep having setbacks, um, so we're trying to move forward with that, so it's not a thing where, you know, we're trying to prolong, I've been there, it'd be three years and two weeks, and I see we haven't progressed at all as far as getting the police building. The city is growing, um, we're trying to get the police department to grow also, so that's where we are with this, and, um, and by all means, um, we're never trying to, um, move our citizens out, you know, so let's keep our information straight. And what we're trying to do, one of the options we looked at, we did a walkthrough, is renovating the nutrition center, uh, the kitchen area, um, making a workstation and roll call room, and the citizens still be able to come in there and do what they do. And I talked to one of the citizens about that, uh, last week, um, just giving them an idea of how to be renovated. So that's a clarification there, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. I, I wanted fully understand that I do support the seniors that live in the city of Glen Arden and seniors everywhere. Um, but let's get the eight hundred pound elephant out of the room. How many of the seniors that participate in the card, uh, plane are citizens of the city of Glen Arden? Uh, we could take a, a poll and find out, uh, I'd like to know how many of them are seniors that live in the city of Glen Arden. And also, as far as if we had to, uh, relocate the seniors, uh, that, that come there to play, uh, cards, uh, the new, um, senior center on, um, Central Avenue at Capitol Heights has now opened. They also have a gym in there for them, uh, plenty of area for playing cards, for playing different ki, types of games and doing different things. Now, that is, that was the reason why that the county shut down the standalone, which the, uh, the city of Glen Arden was for the county, a standalone senior center. They moved them all to Evelyn Cove, which is part of Maryland National Capital Park and Planning, because they could, uh, facilitate them and pay for what was going on. So there is, there are places that they can be, if, if there's a need, because I'm sure when the, when we finished, uh, doing the, uh, resolution for the elevator, they are gonna have, the people that are in the, uh, nutrition center now are gonna have to be moved to a different location in order to do the construction. So there are places that they can be relocated, that's not gonna, uh, put them in any, like they're gonna be out on the street and nowhere to go, because there are places that they can go. We have, uh, Teresa Banks. Once again, Evelyn Cove is in Sea Pleasant is where they located the seniors that were the stand, in the standalone center. And then, like I said, the new center has opened on Central Avenue and has plenty of space, a state-of-the-art facility just for seniors. Thank you, Council President.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Um.
Mr. President, I have one other thing, that, about this legislation too.
Sure, final comment to you, then we'll, we'll move forward.
Um, well, I mean, we do see who, who wanna put the seniors out and who don't, but, um, that's all well and good. Um, this piece of legislation here, if you're gonna be doing two things with this, if you're gonna do a feasibility study, and I don't support the legislation at all, but if you're gonna do a feasibility study, you need to split that up, because if you're gonna do a feasibility study- but if you're gonna do a feasibility study, you need to split that up, because if you're gonna do a feasibility study to find out where the building should be built, then you need to separate that. This needs to be two separate resolutions. You should not co-mingle this, because you're gonna have to se- you're gonna have to submit that resolution and the payment to the state to prove that you spent the money wisely. You should not be co-mingling that money. The, the, the expanding the police department should be separate. That's a separate piece of thing that separate piece of legislation that we're doing on our own, that has nothing to do with the actual police building. This we can get reimbursed for the aid, for the uh feasibility study for the police building, if we're gonna do that. So I think we need to separate this, if we're gonna do it. Don't, don't be co-mingling, whatever is for police, the police station need to be for a police station only. Legis- legislation-wise, not me, not co-mingling this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Mr. Simpson, if we could just, I know Councilman Harry talked about going through the files, but also speaking with our partners to see if they will even accept a feasibility study from two thousand and eight. I think that's an important question to be answered as well. If we do have it, um, and we could find it, then yeah, I mean, ninety thousand dollars for just sort of somebody to tell us the exact same thing, I can understand that. But if they're not, if, if building in twenty twenty-five can accept a feasibility study from two thousand and eight, I can also understand that as, you know, you know, things shit, I don't know anything about earth. You know, all this other stuff to build buildings, I'm not an expert, so. I, I, but I do think that is an important question to ask. Um, and then that next question will be, well, can we even find the document from two thousand and eight? Because that was a long time ago. Um, so, that's that. Next up is a resolution to revise the rules, regulation, and fee schedules of the gold room, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, once again, this resolution has been uh uh laying around for a year. I finally got uh legal sufficiency done on it concerning the waiver. I think that was the stickler that was uh keeping the uh resolution from going forth, because uh, there were uh requests for a waiver that citizens can bring in food from uh somebody's kitchen, or a- any kitchen that was, I'm not somebody's, and unlicensed uh uncertified food handlers uh to prepare the food. Uh, I had the legal sufficiency done by Mr. uh Kupinski, our attorney. He came back and said that uh, a waiver, which I, this information was sent to all the council, um, a waiver has no legal effect. So as a council, as a council person, looking at the Comer laws that are, that have been legislated and enacted by the state of Maryland and Prince George's County guidelines, they request that um, uh a venue such as the Gold Room should have licensed caterers and certified food handlers. So uh, Mr. Kupinski is saying that to write a waiver, it's of no legal effect. We need to protect the cities, the uh, Gold Room from any liabilities. So in order to do that, I think we should move forward with the rules that we've been sworn in and taken a sworn oath to follow the laws. And the law, the Comer laws and the Prince George's County laws concerning, concerning health of citizens and safety, we need to follow those. So I, I believe that we should move forward with the Gold Room rules in order that the Gold Room personnel can move forward in uh, developing the Gold Room in the way that she sees fit, by the rules that we've set forth. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Are there any other questions related to this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, I was gonna say, she put her hand up right before you open your mic. Uh, so Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, okay, um, yeah, I did uh see the um response where um, attorney said a waiver will be of no legal effect, period. The person who rents the Gold Room and/or uh GCC cannot waive the rights of other individuals who are attending the event, Kevin. Okay, now I understand that, the way I understand it is saying that um, it would, you know, um it wouldn't have worked that way, but I don't see, I don't see where um, the person that's given the event would um sign a waiver saying that they take full responsible, responsibility of any um um, because the way I take it is that he said, we, we just can't, we can't uh weigh the rights of, of other individuals. But if someone wants to bring their stuff in and they are, they take responsibility, so if someone gets sick, then that person gets sued, not the city. It doesn't say, I mean, to me, I'm, I mean, I might be reading it wrong, but it, it, it doesn't say that it can't be, th- just the full responsibility would be on that person, and it would be written as such where um, the attendees would um understand that they have no, you know, no claim on the city. And also, the other thing was, I think um, Councilwoman um he own, she's not here, but I, I, she had presented something where um the difference between um, if it was a private um event, like a baby shower or a you know, bridal shower, something like that, where you just have your individual people in there, uh, personal people, that, that, that would um that's where they can actually have um uh their own food. It's when you are um, having events to the, with the public in there, that it's not a private event. The hope, the, the key word was private, that I understood. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Harry?
Yes, and I, I, I agree with uh Councilwoman Ferguson. That's exactly how I read it. Yeah, we can't waive the rights of other people, and it is attending an event, but the person who's giving the event can take full responsibility and uh sign a waiver saying they're not gonna hold us responsible if somebody gets sick off of their food. I think that the way it was brought to us was disingenuous. I don't think it was actually, you know, what it all was cracked up to be. Um, I think that reading it, he's quite, it's quite clear, he's talking about people attending it, which I fully understand that, but this waiver is only signed by the person renting the hall. And I think that we should move, move forward with the changes that we had, the changes that we made, and the changes that we suggested that allow people bring their fo- food into the uh Gold Room. I think we need to stop beating this horse around and around. And if, uh, somebody doesn't wanna vote for it, don't vote for it. But I, I agree with Councilwoman Ferguson. I read it the, the exact same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Um, Councilwoman Marie?
Thank you, Council President. My comments are related to the community room rules. Um, in reviewing the lease agreement and in discussion with Ms. Bun, I would like to propose that we extend the community room space to include Sundays. There's nothing in the lease agreement that is prohibiting that. Um, there's nothing from a availability of staff that is preventing that. Um, and it would allow more usage of this space. This community room is very rarely used during the week. So expanding to have Saturday and Sunday gives more access to residents to utilize that space in the ways that it was intended to be used.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this legislation? Okay, and I think, and I, I know Councilwoman Jones had mentioned this before, I think it's just be a great idea just to have Kevin Kupinski join the call, so we get all of our legal questions out the way, and we and the interpretations that we're getting, we can verify them with him um in a moment, so we can stop kicking this can so far down the road. Alright, um, next up is two resolutions um of the same nature. A resolution pointing uh Dion Devon Jones to the Glen Arden uh election board and Carla Foster to the election board. Uh, are there any comments on those two resolutions before we move on? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on. Uh, mayor's reports i- in, in order to save time, we, I'm not a mayor's report, the administrative reports as we have, you know, made a um a habit of just moving that to the regular session, unless there are any pressing com- uh comments now?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I do have one.
Yeah, Councilman Harry?
And this is basically from Mr. Green in the letter for the permit parking program that he asked us to review and give him uh feedback by Friday the fourth, and I'm trying to figure out where we going with this, because this, this letter has been back and forth for, I guess, about three months. So I'm just gonna ask him where, where we at with this and where we going with this, because this is crazy that we can't get this thing, we can't get one of that out the door.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Councilman Harry. Um, I was under the impression that we were going to discuss the letter today so that we can determine what direction we was going in.
Being under the impression and communicating that is two different things. Um, one, one second, Councilwoman Marie?
Yes, I did um communicate that last week uh in an email to everyone um, to have that as something for us to discuss and review together. And the reason being is that when we're sending comments, I haven't seen others' comments, and I think it makes sense for us to discuss the comments collectively, because what's happening, and I think why it's taken so long, is that Ms. Green is getting comments from one council member, and another council member is not privy to that, and then we're making changes to the changes the council member made, as opposed to just kind of collectively saying, these are the changes that we want to make, or we don't want to make any more changes, and we're good to go.
Okay, let me see if I could get the letter, pull it up. Uh, Council Clerk, could you forward that letter to me, so just at the top of my inbox, please, and I can pull it up? One second. Alright, uh, Council Clerk, you're just gonna forward me the letter, um, because I'm not on the city laptop. Uh, until we get that letter, um is there any other questions on administrative reports? You, Councilwoman Marie?
Did you get it? I sent it to you, you see?
Yep, yep, I got it. I'm to email and call it out. Alright, here we go. Alright, here is the letter. Now, are, are there any edits or comments from council members? I can make this a little bit bigger, people see it.
Council President, I do, I do have a comment.
Yes.
Um, so I know I, I'd made the recommendation months ago, and I'm not sure if that changed, or if there was further discussion that um led to what's in there now around the, the pilot program and only being certain streets. I'd made the comment that if we do that, if we only put this policy on certain streets, that's going to make the surrounding streets that are not impacted more crowded, because likely people will just move their cars to those places. So we're just shifting the issue. So was there a discussion had after that to say, no, we don't wanna do all the streets, or?
There was not a, there was not a discussion uh that was had between the council, but I understand and agree with what you're saying that I'll, I mean, if, if I could have put, park on these streets, and I just go around the corner and park on that street and clutter that street, so um, are there any council members that oppose, or just making it um, just for all streets that are not um within the HOA confines?
Yes, I'm opposed to it, because I think we need to see if the program might actually work. That's one of the problems that we're gonna have. We haven't gotten the program off the ground yet. We don't know whether it's gonna work. I hate to sit us have a sign this big contract and then realize that, especially since we, we may be having a new council that may pull the whole program back, you don't know. So if we had done it earlier, we could have went ahead and initiated that to see how it went, then we could have probably pulled in the rest of the streets, but right now, we don't know what's gonna happen in June, I mean, in May. You know, they may decide to scrap the whole thing. So I think we need to do the pilot program, see if it works, and then move forward. If it works, then we can next, we can expand it. And they may run on other streets, some people may run on other streets, some people may not. They may think that street is a, is a, what's called, I think right now, we need to see if it actually, is actually gonna work, because this yeah, I think we just need to see if it's actually up for these streets.
I understand, that's fair. Any other comments? Alright, are there any other comments on the rest of the letter? Or is the letter in good standing to go forward? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, if there are no comments, then Mr. Green has to green, green light, no pun intended, um, to um to communicate this letter. Alright. Going back to uh, I did miss a resolution, R thirty-four, twenty twenty-five, resolution authorizing the increase of retirement benefits for city of uh Glen Arden, uh for the city employees. This has already been on a work session. Um, but though we passed funding for, we actually did not pass the resolution for it. Um, but are there any final comments on this before moves for yes or no vote?
I mean, I don't agree with it, but, you know, I just think that having two retirement systems is not, I've never seen any organization have two retirement systems in their uh, in the organization. Having one at three percent, that's flat three percent that you get when you walk in the door, and then having another one where you can match up to four percent, which is giving them um seven percent basically across the board, and um, locking, and locking citizens with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar bill every year that will only increase if everybody what you gotta budget for anyway, because you don't know who, how many people gonna match up to the four percent. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair. I think we need to do, pick one or the other and match up to four percent like most organizations across this country do, no more than five. So that's my feeling on that. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, President Curtis, may I make a statement, please?
Yes, Ms. Schultz, you can make a statement.
Good evening. Uh Councilman Harry, uh, actually, we reviewed other um companies as you suggested, and based on our review, um, we looked at three plus what we have now. You recommended Vanguard. Vanguard does not do retirements at all anymore. They sent us to a center, I mean, I'm sorry, a census. We are still waiting to hear from a census. We've been sending them documentation since February uh twenty-fourth. The other company we went with was The other company we went with was Fidelity. Uh, we don't have enough money in our uh, transfer rollover program to meet the requirements of that particular company. Uh, Dean and I both sat down, we talked it over. We considered our recommendation. It's to stay with neutral America, but to keep one program, which is what you were just discussing. The uh, the problem with that is, and I think Dean discussed this with, with everyone fully, was that if we get out the flat, which is what we'll have to do, then whoever is currently in flat will either have the option of being paid out or would have the option of um, rolling that money over into a new one. But we're looking at getting the four oh, four oh one, four oh three B, four fifty-seven, one account that we pay the initial three percent and we would match up to four percent depending if the employee puts in the additional four percent. So we concur with your statement you just made. And that'll be the recommendation that Dean comes back with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. We'll move on, um, CPA, CPA, CPJA, assessment of elevator lobbying project. Um, Mr. Simpson, would you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, good evening. I, I just wanted to bring your attention to, I think I, I sent an email relative to that uh, just for discussion uh, or for your review to decide how you'd like to move forward relative to uh, the elevator project. Um, and just wanted to make sure I got your feedback on that.
Councilman, uh, Councilmember first.
And what was, okay, because I stopped, ma'am, Mr. President.
Sure, Councilman Harry.
Okay, so I saw there, okay, one thing I don't like is we, we, we will have a, we have a presentation for something menial, but something major like this, we don't have CPJ here to go over the, what they, what they gave us. We read it, I read it, I looked it over, but we still need them here to just to discuss it. And I'm not understanding why something is, we can spend one point whatever million dollars on this project and we ain't got nobody here to explain their report or anything else. But we just had a report on some red light cameras that we thinking about getting. You know, I'm just not understanding that. I mean, I, I, I saw the report, I read the report, I have some questions for them because they wrote it, so I want the answers from them. Um, I mean, that's a major project. That's a million dollar project. It looks like it's gonna be a million dollar project. So I mean, you know, I just want to know what the differences is between they compared the two. And you know, I just want to know what the differences is because again, I think some, I think some of them numbers are being um, inflated. But that's me, so. I mean, that's how I feel on that. Alright, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, hold on, Council, hold on, Mr. Simpson, don't, don't disappear.
No, I'm still here.
Uh, speed bump recommendations by CPJA.
Yes, I, you know, I did receive CPJA's speed bump recommendations on today. And I have provided uh, a map with their recommendations of the speed bumps as well as uh, ju- just a summary of uh, what the meetings uh, with them uh, pertain. Um, as mentioned, uh, or may not have ours say as mentioned, uh, in the letter uh, that was sent out to you all today uh, prior to today's meeting, um, it does suggest that uh, any work as far as physically doing anything to the streets in Ward Three and particularly uh, Sir Michael Gieton Place up to Glen Arm Parkway should be held off until the permits uh, for the uh, underdrain uh, are, are actually uh, fulfilled. Um, they do believe uh, CPJ has spoken with Prince George's County uh, and they are holding the contractor accountable to that this time around, apparently, um, and they're anticipating this should, that work should get done soon. However, the, whether temporary or permanent uh, in those locations uh, mentioned should be held off until that work is completed. Um, in CPJA's recommendation, there's a detailed map uh, with a legend showing the recommended locations of speed bumps. They are uh, stating that they don't necessarily recommend the temporary speed bumps. However, I am, now that I have this information, I'm waiting, and the location, I am waiting on uh, CPJ, I'm sorry, NZI to give me a recommendation on costs for the installs. Uh, installing speed bumps of these natures isn't something that is recommended um, that Public Works does. Uh, you want to have a qualified contractor to do so. As soon as I get that information, I'll share that with council immediately. Um, I would like your feedback relative to the summary that was provided today um, at your convenience uh, to be able to get direction from council on uh, next steps. Thank you.
Okay, council members?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Again, this same day, this day of thing has gotten to drive me completely crazy. Because now we gotta sit here and read this and then we have to go have another work session on the floor when we finally read this and be able to ask questions about it. Um, again, again, another one of my problems with this speed bump program is that we've been talking about this for years, years, and I know we had a number of streets that we were looking at. So you sent CPJ out there to um, tell us what streets need to have speed bumps on it when we live here. Now, I know I knew, I had some streets, I know Councilman Ferguson had some streets, I know, I think Councilman Harrison, he sponsored it, he had some streets, I think some other council members had some streets that they were looking at. So when were you gonna get in touch with us to find out what we want? Because again, we know what we um, we know the locations that we want these speed bumps. It's a pilot program. We only got so much money. You know, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure this out. Um, and and CPJ, so they, they did, they measured the streets, CPJ.
Sir, we have the measurements as well. They did the assessment of the street locations. I believe they also had someone from the county or a uh, traffic consultant uh, to also recommend the locations based on distance. Um, all of that is provided in the report. And I do apologize, I just received that particular report uh, when uh, I sent it over to everyone today.
Again, the county doesn't live in Glen Arden. CPJ doesn't live in Glen Arden. You don't live in Glen Arden. We live in Glen Arden. We know what the issues are. We know what the problem issues are. We know where we get, we getting complaints from. You know, it's only a limited amount, limited amount of money. Right now, we trying to slow down traffic on certain streets. And if we had to do the whole city, then we'll do the whole city. But right now, we want to see if they even, if they even slow down the traffic on some of the problem streets that we have. So I'm just saying, again, CPJ does not live in Glen Arden. They don't speak for the residents of Glen Arden. We will put in office to speak for the residents of Glen Arden. I know some of the streets that are, are major problems. I haven't even looked at the reports, so that's why I'm speaking on this because again, uh, if I had had a report earlier, it might, it might be addressing some of the, some of my concerns, but I haven't, I didn't get it to be able to read it. Um, so again, I'm just trying to, I, I mean, so it may change. I'm just saying, this is, this would takes a long time because again, you should have reached out to the council and the council members that were sponsoring that legislation has found out, and the council as a whole, to find out what streets they consider problem streets. And we could have focused on those and probably cut down some of this time with CPJ and doing their reports and paying them to do a report that we probably like, okay, these are the streets we need to get done. So, alright, thank you. Um, yeah, alright. Guess it'd be another year before we get a man. Thanks.
Alright. I think we already talked about the stop sign camera program, but Councilwoman Jones, do you have anything else to say?
No, Council President, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, and the last one is the uh, well, there's two more things. Um, annual police award ceremony. Um, so I believe in the past we hosted this and the chief wanted um, us to be able to grant gratis to the award ceremony uh, that'll be held on July the sixteenth. Um, and so I don't know, is the chief still here if you want to talk about it or not?
Hello, everyone. Uh, yes, um, it's the um, uh, Chiefs Association uh, annual award ceremony. Um, they do it every year. They held it here in the past um, years ago. And um, they, they want to do it again here this year. I'll send someone to board. Um, they asked, could they do it here? Um, and I sent the email out a wha- a while back of, I think a few weeks ago. Um, so they wanted to revisit and do a follow-up and I told them I would reach out to you guys again. Um, in reference to it, I checked with a code room coordinator for that date um, from eleven AM to two PM. And it's available, so um, just waiting to get you all uh, blessings in reference to it. So I can let them know at the next uh, Chiefs Association meetings. Thank you.
Okay, is anyone uh, opposed to extending gratis?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to get a consensus on that.
Okay, uh, the consensus is yes to extend gratis, no to not. Um,
I think the consensus would be, do we want to extend gratis? If you do a yes or no, it's a vote.
Do, yeah, do we want to?
So you just, yeah, you don't do, you don't do a no option because if you're saying a yes or a no, then it becomes a vote. You just want to get a consensus on if we want to give gratis and it's either yes.
Okay.
If you do.
A consensus on whether we want to extend gratis for this event? Yes, if you do. Councilwoman Marie.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Vice President first.
First, I mean, I've had for the, our police chiefs. Uh, when uh, Chief O'Donnell was here, I participated in a couple of those uh, chiefs meetings. Yes.
Vice President first.
Councilman Hairston?
Yeah, come on.
Yes.
You hear everybody like, oh, this is my son. Everybody's time, the good time.
Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, so it's a yes. Uh, next up is meetings. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to um, convey a message from a couple of our seniors who I have great concern for, that attended the uh, regular meeting last month, March twenty-fourth. And they were kind of taken aback on how, you know, long the meeting took because they had something that they wanted to convey to the council, their concerns in the area that they live in. And they felt like they weren't given that opportunity because the meeting was prolonged, taken so long. Uh, some of the questions they brought up, one of the questions they asked me is, you know, uh, I noticed that you don't ask so many questions during a regular meeting. And uh, they wanted to know why. And I told them, because I do all of my homework before the meeting to make sure that all of the questions that I have are either answered in the work session or along the way to the regular meeting so that citizens will have an opportunity to voice whatever it is that they want to say. So I'm just asking the council, this council and whoever comes into the council uh, next full term to be mindful of senior citizens that come in. These uh, particular ci- citizens were, you know, have issues, uh, health issues and they like to be in at a certain time or, but um, we can move our meetings along a whole lot faster. You know, because they felt like it was a whole lot of grandstanding going on during the meeting and uh, we could have moved the meeting along faster so that they would have an opportunity to come before the council and ask their questions or voice their concerns. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, there was one last thing. I think the Board of Elections. But I do not see Ms. Cynthia Gray. Council Clerk, do you have the information?
I do. I, I also see Ms. Cooper from the um, election board is on there, so I don't know if she wants to.
Okay. Um, I, I don't want to put Ms. Cooper on the spot because she wasn't.
Uh, Ms. Gray is here with me now.
Okay, alright, great. Thank you. Alright, so um, it, I got an email in my in- inbox about uh, communicating the uh, qualified candidates for city council during this meeting and then posting it on the website. Um, the attorney has agreed that it is fine for them to announce it at the meeting. So with that, I am going to turn the the um, floor over to Ms. uh, Cynthia Gray and Ms. Gail Cooper to announce the candidates for the upcoming election on May fifth. Ms. Cynthia Gray and Ms. Cooper.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Gray, the Board of Elections Supervisor. We wanted to congratulate twelve candidates um, that were certified this evening. Ms. Dinah Price, Mr. Andrew Bounds, Ms. Yvonne Bell White, Ms. Robin Jones, Mr. Derek Curtis II, Mr. James Herring, Mr. Don Juan Williams, Ms. Carolyn Smallwood, Mr. Anthony Foster, Mr. Maurice Harrington, Ms. Angela Ferguson and Ms. Keshina Cross. Congratulations.
For Citizens for Washington, the list will also be on um, the website. Um, and you can get in contact with the Board of Elections if you have any other questions. With that, that is the end of the agenda items. Um, the time is, and, and thank you, Ms. Cooper and uh, Ms. Cynthia Gray. Uh, the time is nine forty-eight. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.